Definitely is. Okay, I'll make a motion to open the meeting. Is there a second?
One second.
Yeah, we're on it. Roll call.
Trustee Lampier?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Liken?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Does any board member have a disclosure regarding any of the relevant information or contact pertaining to any of the items on the agenda before us this evening?
I do not. I do not, Lampier, I do not.
I do not. I do not.
And I do not, okay. Does any board member have a conflict of interest regarding any of the items on the agenda that is having a financial interest in the outcome of a vote on an item before you?
Lampier, I do not.
I do not?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not, okay. And just for the record, if a conflict was identified, the board member would have to recuse themselves from that agendted item. Okay, and with that being done, we have the open meeting compliance.
Okay. Let's see if I can get this through. The public will have opportunities to comment on specific agenda items when they occur in the meeting and also on general matters at the end of the meeting. Speakers can comment once in each comment window if it is on a specific agenda item. It is not a debate, deposition, or a panel discussion. Speakers must step to the front of the room if physically able. Alternatively, they may provide comments from where they are seated. If an attendee is participating via web conference technology such as Zoom, the court will announce how attendees should signal that they wish to comment. This may differ by platform. It is typically accomplished through raised hand feature. We are using Zoom, and I do recognize that in raising, and also we'll look for questions in Q and A. If you put them in chat, I don't look in chat, so please stick to the Q and A if you're looking for me to ask the question. Speakers must give their name, address, and organization. There shall be an exemption for any category of people protected by state law. Speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer. Speaker must limit the remarks to three minutes on a given topic. Speakers may not yield any remaining time they may have to another speaker. Board members may, with permission of the mayor, only interrupt the speaker during their remarks for the purpose of clarification or information. Speakers must observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Interested parties or their representatives may address the board by written communications to villageclerk@villageofpittsburgh.com. All written communications will become part of the public record and will be attached to minutes for the meeting. At December's request, written communications will be read aloud by the clerk at the meeting and will adhere to the three-minute time limit. If three-minute materials or other media provided by attendees during the meeting, they must be submitted to the village board with actual distribution to audience members. All materials will be part of a public record. Private distribution of materials to audience members only is prohibited. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you do me a favor? Can somebody on Zoom confirm that the audio is okay and just shoot a question to Dorothea and just say, yeah, we can hear you okay? Thanks. And just give us the thumbs up once you hear from somebody.
I'm here.
All right, thanks.
I got a Q and A. Audio is good.
Okay, good.
Okay, wonderful.
Yeah, audio is good. Hey, we have good audio. More than in minutes.
Okay, I would like to make a brief statement this evening as I begin the meeting with a heavy heart. We all have been profoundly affected by the recent horrific events. The gunning down of our friends and neighbors in Buffalo in an act of pure racial hatred, followed by the senseless massacre of beautiful schoolchildren and two of their beloved teachers in Texas. These are but two events now added to the list of more than 210 mass shootings in our nation this year. We're not even halfway through the year. The grief of the families, friends, and the affected communities is just unfathomable. So I ask everyone here this evening and everyone watching at home, please, let's take a moment of silence and solemn reflection and remembrance. Now, moving on, Trustee Keating has asked to read a statement prior to us getting into the agenda item.
Yeah, that's a very tough transition to come out of that. So thank you for your words. They're very meaningful and appreciated, and this has nothing to do with...
Yeah, no, it's something separate, so...
Yeah, okay. "To the villagers and trustees, I believe that solving 75 Monroe is the number-one priority in this village. I believe, from listening to the villagers, that this is what they want, their government to solve. Everything else comes second. I also believe, from listening to all, from reviewing the documents, from being in the room for four-plus years, from listening to Mayor's Bob Corby and Elisa Plummer's direct quotes, and from understanding what has happened in the legal process, that it's likely that something will get built there. I don't believe that Mark IV PCP will just go away. They've invested too much human capital and cash to walk away. I think a handful of people in this village are hoping for them to walk away. I don't see it. Sure, anything is possible, but I don't see it. So in that spirit, the job for the village government is to work towards the best solution for the villagers and to do that in a way that minimizes the cost to the villagers. We have to work toward both: a great solution and low costs. I believe both are possible. We were in litigation on it for almost a decade. We lost some of those decisions; we won some of them. It cost us millions. It's still not all paid off. You paid and continue to pay for this in your taxes, which effectively doubled over the last 10 years. We had a fresh start last year. We, the village boards, had asked the developer to come back with new designs with certain parameters. They presented a new concept: new designs, a fresher start. The village boards have been deliberating it ever since. So there's some momentum, but it's very slow, and I'm not sure all know where we're going. I want to avoid another round of lawsuits, if at all possible. So this means working collaboratively toward a solution. That's what I'm proposing here. The whole thing is clear from a governance standpoint. The system is designed, rightly so, for the three boards involved to act independently: the Historic Preservation Board, the Planning and Zoning Board, the PCBA. And the trustees each have separate roles, and we're not to interfere with each other. I respect that. It's how it's supposed to work. The decisions of those boards should come from those boards alone. But it is possible for these boards to work together, and that's the piece that I don't see happening. And the part that I'm calling for in this message to you: Currently, I don't think the left hand knows what the right hand is doing, and that is solvable if we get in a room and work through it. Here's the immediate need, and here's how I can see how we can work together to make it happen, in a series of questions and answers. So what is the need? I think if you gave a blank piece of paper to each of the trustees, each of us, and all of the lawyers, and all of the voting members of the PCBA and the HPP, our code enforcement officer and our village clerk, and asked them to write down the steps that we need to take to get from where we are today to a completed project, I think you would get wildly different answers. That's nobody's fault. I'm talking about roughly 20 people. I think you'd get 20 different answers, and I don't think a single one of them would be 100% accurate. As a professor, if I was grading this assignment, the spread of grades would be wide. There would be some incompletes, some Fs, a few Cs, some Bs, and an A minus or two. I'm guessing there would be no As. There's not one person who kind of understands every piece of this thing. I'm imagining I'd get about a B or a B+. Why is this so complicated? It just is. Who did what, when, to whom, it's a ball of spaghetti. I've been deeply immersed in it for years, and it is really complex. But the past hurts, don't really matter. The scars are there, and so be it. But I'm not sure people really understand what needs to happen in the present and the future to land this plane. Why is this important? As someone who has spent a lot of my career doing project management, if the team doesn't know where it's going, if there's no roadmap, no plan, then you'll never get there. And if you do, it will be ugly. It doesn't need to be. So what is this specific ask? This is an old idea that has been considered many times by previous boards, by the developer, by solutions-focused villagers who want to see progress. I'm proposing forming a committee of one to two people from each of the boards, along with counsel and sometimes the developer. What would this group do? It would be tasked with a project plan, a roadmap, with articulating for all what needs to be done, when, and by whom. If we all understand where we're going, we're more likely to get there. A few more questions. Does the group have any oversight over the other boards? No. The HPP and PCBA and trustees are still tasked with doing their legal jobs without any interference. Does the group have any decision-making authority? No. No promises can be made, and they wouldn't be enforceable even if they were. Will the group approve designs? No, an emphatic no. That is done by the voting boards in public. Again, this is a group meant to create a project plan, to know who needs to do what, when, to facilitate communication between all of the involved parties, to make sure the left hand knows what the right hand is doing today and who needs to do what next. So what's the point in doing this? It's simply for all involved to know what steps are in place getting to done. And I'm almost done, please bear with me. If we have a project plan understood by all, will this help? I don't know. It might, it might not, but it's better than not doing anything. Personally, I think it will. We've tried it the other way, mostly through lawyers, and it's cost us a fortune. Perhaps a more collaborative, more common-sense solution will work. Would this happen in public? Well, with one or two people from each board, it doesn't need to. It's not an official meeting, there's no quorum, there are no decisions being made, there are no promises, there are no commitments to anything. But the public should be involved, of course, and there will be a lot of time for public education and public input. The whole point is to get a public plan for all to understand. There aren't secrets. So what can you do? If you think this is a good idea, please urge the members of the PCBA, HPP, and trustees to have people from their boards take part in this. There's nothing that says a board has to sanction participation in this group. There just needs to be one or two from each board who choose to participate in creating something which might help. So ask the people you know, and send emails to the ones you don't, and urge them to participate. Who would participate in this? Or why wouldn't people participate in this? I don't know. It's a common-sense idea meant to help get us to a solution at a low cost. If a person doesn't want to be a part of that, I'd imagine you would question their motives. And this is the last question. Who is this intended to help? You, the villagers. Remember what I discussed at the beginning of this statement. The intent is to get the best possible solution for you at the lowest cost. From what I can see, a project plan can only help. We have to know where we're going and all the points along the way if we're going to get there. Thank you very much, and open to your ideas.
Dan, thank you for that. You know, you really put so much thought into that and really, I think, outlined some really nice ideas. I would like to have, if we could, if we could have this distributed to all the boards and their attorneys.
You bet.
Okay. Thank you. Much appreciated.
Sorry to take so much time.
Oh, that's okay.
Takes a long time to write something short, and I didn't have that much time.
But you've put a lot of thought into that, and it's appreciated. Thank you for that. Okay, so next up, we have a presentation from Pittsburgh Community. Oh, we should have, yeah, go. We don't even have a mic up there, do we?
No, we don't. No, we don't. So I will...
So you will speak, you will project.
Yes, I will use my own voice. And so here is the presentation, and this is made by the people of Pittsburgh. Children, adults, in a variety of forums that were held in the library, at Nazareth, in schools, and it's for Pride Month, and its theme is welcome, all are welcome in Pittsburgh. And so we'd like to present it to the Village of Pittsburgh and hope that you will display it somewhere for Pride Month, and it's yours to do it as you would. Okay?
Thank you. Do we need a motion to accept it?
Beautiful.
I guess so.
Yeah, so I'll make, it's really lovely. I'll make a motion that we accept this beautiful donation from Pittsburgh Community. Is there a second?
One second.
Roll call.
Trustee Liken?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. And the one other thing tonight...
Oh, but wait, there's more.
Yes, and there's more. A talented Pittsburgh team has designed a logo that we're using for mugs and asks that we present one to each trustee.
Oh, very happy. Oh, that's really lovely.
Yes.
Isn't that $25 in God?
It's much, much less than $25.
Yeah, we have our guidelines here.
And I will not ask you to vote on anything related to mug-related...
Very kind.
Oh, that's so lovely. Thank you.
Beautiful.
And so thank you very much.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, and thank the group as well, and everybody who was part of this effort. That's really great.
Can you flip that over so we can look at it?
Of course.
Yeah, thank you. Or maybe can we put it up there or something, just for a minute?
We'll talk. I think we should all talk together.
Yes.
Okay, we'll find a beautiful spot for it.
I just meant for...
Okay.
Forever. Thank you. Please tell them how moved we were by it. I appreciate it.
Okay, I will do that.
No, that was really nice. Okay, next up, treasurer's report.
Something isn't with us tonight. He's fine and well.
Yeah, he's just not here. Okay.
So he did present, there was an updated bill pay. Is there any questions or concerns with anything on the bill pay?
Yeah, $657 for $2,100, Bank Reconciliations for Mingle Metzger Bar.
Correct. That is the village accountants, and that is for work, I believe, there's, most of it is prior in January, early this February, and working with the past treasurer.
Okay, okay. So it's their work on bank reconciliation?
Yes, they're doing bank reconciliations and working with Mary at that time. It's well within the budget we therefore establish.
Do you have any other questions regarding the report? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved to approve the check run as is.
One second.
Roll call, please.
Okay, Trustee Lampier?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Liken?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving along. Village clerk, report.
So me.
It's you.
This, what I need is approval from the village board to pay Hudson Ross and friends at Pittsburgh Village for the two debts that we have. These will be the last payments, but I have to make those payments on June 1st. So we don't have a meeting when we get into the new budget for a little while, but these are debts that have to be paid immediately on June 1st as per the agreement. So if I can have a motion to authorize payment to Hudson for $25,093.14, friends at Pittsburgh Village for $33,166.67, and it actually goes to their attorney.
And that's next fiscal year, that's the '22, '23 fiscal year.
Correct, but I have to make that payment on one.
Yeah, we need to set it up now.
I'm ready to get it done, so we can have it.
So moved.
Okay.
One second.
All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Lampier?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Liken?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you for that.
Okay.
And let's move on. And you have February financials. So...
Yes, thank you. Hooray.
Everything looks as expected, everything's moving around. There was some negative lines, they have been anticipated in the budget. I prepared budget transfers for both General and Sewer. Here really isn't any surprise, there's some of the negative numbers that, you know, are concerning, but they're expected, and we budgeted, we anticipating that in the next year. Are the fuel costs, heating costs, all those have increased. I think we've all seen it at the gas pumps, so it wouldn't be surprising the village is seeing it as well. We did run into the negative on those.
Yeah, and that's, I've been talking with other municipalities, they're with the same concerns and...
And I guess with the copies, we've seen this with the January financials, we really are putting out a lot of trees, and I can say, you know, one of the things that triggers it is these large packets, different things happening. So yeah, so we are using a lot of copy, copy time than we have done in the past. Outside of that, there's nothing too disconcerting unless the board found something they were really concerned with, and it really was my own.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you for highlighting the negative class, we have made a whole culture move through one.
Oh, yes.
So we should pay attention to it.
Yeah, I think the presentation, it's helpful to me too, just everything, formatting, yeah, thank you for that.
Everything's good. I will point out in the revenues, it's very exciting to see in February, only $100,000 for nearly revenue anticipation. And I can tell you, because I've seen a movie ahead, we did receive our tax, final tax payment, and we had $165,000. So I was a little disappointed because I budgeted, when I did the budget presentation, I was asking me $167,000, so it was close. So, you know, we did come in well above our expectation with sales tax. If I can just have approval for the budget transfers and acceptance of the financials is presented, unless there's other questions.
Anybody?
Someone?
Okay, we had it in stereo.
That's all right, I'll second his.
Okay, nice seconding. Roll call, please.
Trustee Liken?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Great, and thank you. Well done.
I will tell the board, things are moving along much smoother. I want to say you'll be seeing March very soon. I was very happily working on it today, so I am, I'm gonna give you a deadline, but I'm hoping next week. Don't hold me to that, okay?
Thank you.
So let's move on. The last thing I have is the health care for 2022. This is another payment. It's the money we put in the employees' accounts on June 1 and December, or January month, or months and months. And again, this is something that can't wait until the next budget year, but it is next year's budget expect. So if I can have approval for the health savings fund funding?
Motion to approve the HSA funding.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Lampier?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Liken?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. And I think that's all I have for the board tonight.
Okay, well, thank you, really, well done, thank you.
I do want to note that it took less than two weeks to get from closing January to closing February, so thank you.
Yes, I was quite happy with that.
And March is clipping along.
March is very clipping along, and I'm not gonna say...
No, we don't want to jinx anything.
I want to be honest with you.
I know, I know. Okay, so let's turn now, oh, the minutes, the minutes, we still have to do our minutes. One set of minutes there.
I do appreciate the board accepting those last night and all the corrections. You know, I look and I look, and there's always a little something. So if there is no other changes, and I do appreciate everybody's chiming in, if I can have those approved as well.
As amended?
As amended.
As amended.
Amended by email?
And amended by almost everybody in the room.
Yeah.
And you all found different stuff.
I know. It's good, awesome, number of sets of eyes. Okay, so we have...
Let's see, the motion?
For the April 14th minute.
Motion to approve the April 14th minute as amended.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll be all three seconds.
Second?
She only worked...
Okay, sure.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's right.
Did I hit anyone in those minutes, really?
I'm sorry?
Did I hit anyone in those minutes? No, we're, no, I was saying, I was telling them someone over there has to...
Oh, you guys weren't there.
That's right. We gave corrections, but we can't vote.
Yeah, that's right.
It was so nice.
Okay.
Okay, roll call.
Roll call. Trustee Liken?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lampier, abstain? Trustee Stetser abstain? Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
All righty.
I'm really done talking.
For now. Okay, now let's turn to our meeting items. First up is Siemens Government Energy and Sustainability Program. Mr. Cat?
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good to be back.
Yeah, good to see you.
So inside the blue folders as well as your agendas for this evening is a brief overview of what our smart infrastructure program looks like at Siemens. My name is Chris Cat, and I serve as market lead for Siemens Smart Infrastructure here in upstate New York. So we work with communities across the nation to help them achieve their infrastructure goals, their future planning goals, as well as meet the challenges posed by climate change and achieve full sustainability. When we talk about the future of...
I think he was...
Okay, we're good, okay.
But I think this is a presentation...
Here you go. Yeah, is anybody else on?
Yeah, we can pass this out, go and see.
Oh, there it is.
Okay, yeah.
Do you have any...
We have this beautiful natural light by close to the window. There's more.
There we go, yeah, so that way folks can see what he's talking about.
So, Siemens was founded in 1847, you know, just a couple of decades after the Village of Pittsburgh. We've had a presence here in Rochester for nearly 100 years. So, you know, just like the Village of Pittsburgh, we have a long history that we're proud of. And when we think about the future of communities, we believe that Siemens, with our culture, that depends on a community's reputation, sustainability, education for all, workforce development and preparedness, as well as quality of life and promoting economic growth. The question is, how do we meet those challenges? How do we meet those challenges as a corporation, as a responsible corporate citizen, and how do we meet those challenges for those who are serving municipal government? Increasingly, climate change is becoming a concern, not only on a national level, but also on state level and on a municipal level. Many of you have probably heard about CLCPA. These are draft regulations being proposed by the state that would involve a reduction in carbon emissions, as well as New York generating seventy percent of its electricity consumption from renewables by 2030. These are really ambitious goals that communities are going to need to confront and find sustainable ways, both financially and, both financially and infrastructure wise, to meet those challenges. So that's where our focus is on smart infrastructure at Siemens. It's helping communities meet those challenges with their current infrastructure today, but also plan for the future so they can meet those challenges. And especially as the federal government and state government continue to adopt new regulations, which will continue to make their way down to local governments as mandates, governments of all sizes. So one way you can meet those challenges is by working with communities to help them adopt smart infrastructure measures. So there's a brief outline that you'll see on page three of what those infrastructure measures look like. One of those is EV charging with fleet electrification. So as it stands now, New York has no mandates for municipalities to electrify their fleets. In the future, the future is unknown, but there will likely be either mandates or certainly additional incentives to do that. Electrification of vehicles and EV charging availability is not only important from a sustainability perspective, but also for an economic development perspective. Site lighting, ensuring that we're using smart lighting to reduce our electricity consumption and thus not only reduce our utility bills, but also reduce our carbon emissions. Mass notification technology, especially from a public safety perspective, to keep residents informed and aware of what's going on. And then also HVAC controls. So when we look at where communities are headed, moving towards electrification, heat pumps and other technologies, so they're less dependent on oil, gas and propane, and you're planning for five, 10, 15, 20 years out, it's important to evaluate those technologies and see if there is a way to utilize them to your advantage. New York provides a way to accomplish these goals, and it's called Article Nine. Article Nine of New York's energy law. It's a no-risk way for communities to leverage their current energy spend, reduce that spend and use the savings to actually pay for smart upgrades, whether that's roofs, windows or lighting. It allows you to update and improve facilities to meet the community's current needs, but also means that you may need to plan for in the future without using tax dollars. So without raising taxes and without rating your capital funds you've already allocated to other important things. Oftentimes what we find when we work with municipalities is there's a limited amount of funding. You have important choices to make. And the items such as HVAC systems, they're not necessarily public facing, so those are often the systems that might take, you know, much longer to replace than the more immediate concerns that the public sees every day. So that's, you know, one of the things we've observed in virtually every municipality we've worked in. So when you look at a municipal budget, you know, this is an example from a recent project we completed. You've got your bond debt service, your payroll, your highway water sewer, capital projects. And then highlighted in yellow, you'll see utilities. That's what you're paying for your electric, gas, oil and water. So we take that utility bill, right? And that's what's going to actually pay, reducing that utility consumption is what actually pays for these infrastructure upgrades. So if you'll join me on the next page, again, this is a recent example of a town we did a performance contract in, in Long Island. We redistribute the budget. So your new lower utility bill is up on the top left. Your payment to complete these upgrades is in the middle. And free cash flow back into your budget is on the very bottom. So that's additional dollars from saving on your utility costs by doing common sense things like LED light conversions, streetlight conversions, et cetera. So it's driving additional free cash flow into the budget and in a neutral way that does not require you to use your capital funds to make these upgrades. The way we accomplish this is through blending. So you have immediate things such as LED lighting that have a very high return on investment. Replacing a fixture with an LED fixture, that pays for itself within, you know, two to three years. Now you have longer term items such as heating units, whether that's a furnace, a boiler or a wall, or a wall on an electrified system. Or roofing, windows, those are much longer payback periods, right? So they're more expensive and the reduction in energy consumption is much less than the reduction on lighting. So what we do is we blend the two together to create a project that allows you to achieve both objectives. Some examples of shorter payback items are LED street lighting, interior and exterior lighting, building envelope and weatherization, which I, you know, many people have probably seen that being promoted by NYSERTA for residential units as well. Pipe installation upgrades, water and sewer conservation measures. Those items have a very quick return on investment. Longer term payback is your air conditioning and heating equipment, boiler replacements, windows, roofs, et cetera. Article Nine allows you to leverage that, what you're currently spending in utilities to pay for these upgrades that not only promote sustainability, but also allow you to have improved infrastructure that you would otherwise have to pay for at some point in time. You can acquire outside of your proposed budget. These projects are self-funded, so there is not an impact to taxpayers. And it's also exempt from the two percent tax cap, because again, the projects pay for themselves. So there's no impact on the tax cap or bond rating. And the reason New York came up with Article Nine and enacted it into law was to allow municipalities and school districts to make energy saving upgrades quickly so that they could adapt, you know, to, I think we had it earlier, Northia did, with these rising costs. So school districts in New York and municipalities are eligible to participate in the Article Nine program. And one of the other interesting things about Article Nine is it mandates no change orders. So it is a fixed, so the projects, once they're agreed upon by the municipality and the energy services company, the energy services company can't say, oh, we unscrewed a fixture, behind that we found X, and issue a change order and come back for more funding. So that's unique and different. New York enacted that to protect municipalities, and that's the world we operate in. The other item that makes Article Nine different than other sorts of infrastructure funding mechanisms is that the ESCO, the energy services company, has to guarantee the savings. So they have to guarantee the kilowatts saved, the gallons of oil saved, whatever, whatever energy sources are being used. So if an ESCO says we're going to save 10 kilowatts and only saves nine, they have to write the municipality back a check for the difference. So that's, it holds the contractors accountable, it holds the ESCO accountable, and it removes an element of risk that municipality would otherwise be faced with. And I'm just going to be cognizant of time. So federal state utility grant opportunities. So these projects, these Article Nine projects can be paid for through energy savings. That's how they're developed. On top of energy savings, you also have a number of federal state utility grant incentives. At Siemens, we pursue those on behalf of the municipalities we work with to bring additional dollars into a project so we can stretch it further for the municipality. So whether that's rebates back on lighting or charging stations, we pursue those on behalf of the municipality to stretch that savings further. Right now, we are on the cusp of many changes, both at the state level and nationally, with environmental issues and energy, and there's a great deal of grant funding available. Whether that grant funding will be there in five or 10 years when this is mandated is anyone's guess, but we see it as our role to help prepare our clients for this transition in a self-funding way. And with that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions from board members.
Thank you, thank you very much. So the last little bit here, I just want to understand this. So the grants are available now.
Yep.
The mandate isn't in place yet.
Yet.
There will be a mandate coming.
In all likelihood.
Yeah, okay. So what I'm hearing is that there's kind of a window to put this in effect and go for the grant money, because the grant money could just go away. Once it's mandated, there's no.
There's no incentive.
Yeah.
There's no incentive.
No, that's helpful, that's helpful to hear that, you know, so we understand that.
And what we would be interested in doing with the Village of Pittsburgh, no risk to the Village of Pittsburgh, is doing, bringing in some of our energy engineers, doing an audit, pulling those utility bills and seeing what sustainability that infrastructure projects could be self-funded and how that would look to present to you for your consideration.
Yeah.
And again, that would be at our risk and our cost.
Wow. So, you know, we have been, first of all, we adopted, we're a climate smart community, which is great. So this will also help us accrue the points towards some of the grant funding that we were talking about. And we have an outdated heating system. So we're using oil and gas. So this is probably a pretty exciting opportunity to maybe even look at geothermal or heat pump or something that would really be far more efficient and cost effective long-term for our village, for sure, yeah.
Zach, we did the lights already, didn't we?
Our seventy five.
Yeah, we're almost there, yeah, yeah. And you also had mentioned something when I spoke with you before about streetlights.
Sure.
And just that whole.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you could speak to that as well, because streetlights are a biggie here.
Right.
In the village.
Right. So from a basic looking at the village budget, it's approximately fifty thousand dollars a year in leases for your street lighting and then utilities on top of that, I believe. So many communities have found a tremendous amount of savings by buying out those streetlights, which is the biggest component of the cost of the streetlights, is those lease payments. So buying out those lease payments, so they get retained, get control of all those assets, they can use them how they want to. And it drives a tremendous amount of savings, and that savings can be used to pay for other things, like new heating units and air conditioning units, while ensuring too, when you own that asset, you can determine how you want it used, whether that's certain compliance with codes, historical codes, that sort of thing. So, because I know there's a number of historic fixtures in the village.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, protecting those and one of the best ways to protect them is to own them, so.
Yeah, no, and that I know has been under discussion actually for a while, Zach, I know you.
Just tough to find.
Yeah.
The hard light.
Yeah.
Yeah, hard lights particularly.
You matter rules.
Yeah. And then you also had spoken about controlling the lights.
Sure.
Putting in control systems, the big dimmer switch for the village.
So in your packets, you'll see some of our recent projects in upstate New York. One of those was the city of Troy. We've been their partner on energy and sustainability now for three, four years. I don't know if we should include the COVID years in that, but we handled their street, their streetlight conversions. And one of the interesting things is that data goes directly back to the folks who are maintaining them. So there's a light out, you know, the resident doesn't have to call a one eight hundred number and wait for till whenever.
Two years.
Yeah.
Did I say that out loud, yeah?
The maintenance company and the community gets an automatic notification. So everybody's on the same page, and with any luck, it will be fixed before the resident even notices. Also with lighting controls, so they get an automatic notification whenever a light goes out, so that information reports back. And then also depending on the different areas of the community, you might want a high, you know, higher number of lumens, more bright. Some other areas you might want less bright. You can get that centralized control, so you can also save energy costs and from a resident comfort perspective, right? Somebody's on that end of the street, and there's a street light directly in front of their house, their needs are going to be different perhaps than, you know, the means they're out there, so.
Yeah, that's amazing. And can you just talk about some of the, some of the projects you've just done in the communities? I know you also do some work for the Pittsburgh School District.
Yeah.
As well, right?
Yeah, Pittsburgh School District operates Siemens controls. So the control systems for all their furnaces and electrical or Siemens, RGH Corning, if we have any Kodak folks, all of Eastern Park. So, you know, those are some of our Bronco schools, that's another project. So FLCC, Ontario County, so, and those are, we've been their trusted partner, you know, most of those for a number of years. Because our control systems are upgradable year after year. And the one unique part about Siemens is we're not only an engineering firm, but we're also a manufacturer as well, so.
So then the process for this is, is it, how is it initiated? And then, you know, if you could just maybe.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just quickly cover it, you know.
So what we could do is at our risk, have work with the elected officials, village staff, to do a preliminary assessment of the village's various energy consuming infrastructure. So water, electricity, gas, oil, et cetera. And come back with some ideas to share with you. Alternately, you can certainly put out an RFQ, which we respond to. So either, either method is, you know, we'd be happy to share some ideas with you at our cost, or you could do an RFQ that we could respond to.
Okay. Any other questions from board members, any of those?
Is there any benefit to joining with the town and, or should we be just looking at our village?
We can certainly, because they would be separate, I think what we, what we see a lot is once one community takes this step, the communities around them quickly follow. So for instance, the city of Troy, Rensselaer County's county office building is based in the city of Troy. We started actually with Rensselaer County. And, you know, they saw tremendous increase in, you know, employee comfort, comfort for members of the public in their buildings, and reduced costs. So the city of Troy, where that office building is, is like, well, how do we participate in that? You know, certainly, if you're, we could engage with the town. But the Village of Pittsburgh is unique, and you've already taken so many steps towards addressing climate change as well as historic preservation. And, you know, we would be excited to work with just the village or the village and the town.
So we could be leading edge.
Exactly.
Set the tone, great.
And some of the infrastructure needs might be a little bit different too, right?
Yeah.
So like, you know, there's, the village is prior, like priorities in terms of even like, we're talking about historic street lighting. That's going to be very different than the streetlights that are in most parts of the town.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, if we were fortunate enough to work with the village, we would certainly reach out to the town and try to get them involved in some of the planning and discussions.
Great, all right. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's a great presentation, really interesting.
If you have any questions, I'll be around after, happy to answer anything that might come to mind in the next couple of minutes.
Great, thank you, thanks so much, Chris. Okay, I. I actually, I'm going to move the zoning violation, the complaint down. Just drop it down to right above the Waddams House, just so we can get through the Martin Luther King Day Statement next, and then followed by Pride Month. So, and Dan, you would ask that, for that to be on the agenda?
Well, let's do the Pride Month first, because I think that's the easier one.
Okay.
And it's, is it a week from today? It's a week from yesterday.
Yeah.
It's June first. Last year, we invited the students from the Gay Student Alliance, Sutherland and Mendon, and they joined, and we raised the banner. So that was donated to us, do we still have that?
We sure do.
We sure do. So I'll make a motion to do the same thing again.
Do you have a ceremony or just raise the, raise the flag again like we did last year?
Want to do that in two pieces? I mean, I don't know if we can get a ceremony together.
Probably can, it's a little short notice, but.
The last one came together like in days. They were thrilled about it.
It was great, we had a nice turnout.
It's worth a shot.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to fly the banner for the month of June.
Oh, second.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Lankin. Excuse me, could we have some discussion about this first? I think that the idea is a good one. I'm somewhat concerned that we seem to be discussing items that are not at all presented in the, in the agenda. I'd really like to better understand what is being proposed. I mean, this is just a blank item for Pride Month. I just wanted to make that statement early and see if anybody else had comments.
It's the same banner from last year that was presented. There's no change in the, in the banner. Yeah, sure.
That brings up a question in my mind. So if the village accepts a gift, this is flag or any other, does that mean that once they accept it, it is to be flown in perpetuity at any, at any, or just do, they have to re-ask or re-gift each time?
We have, we have accepted the gift. We can accept gifts and never do anything with them. So we make the motion to accept the gift, then we make the motion.
Each year.
Each year, essentially. We have this banner, we would like to fly it again this year.
Okay, I see.
As a sign of inclusion for gay Pride Month, so.
I see.
Yeah.
And I.
Isn't I good with that, Jeff? Is that hard?
Precisely.
I want to acknowledge what trustee Lankin's saying, just like what the actual item was in there. It would have been helpful to know we're going to be voting this or Pride, I don't know. I understand what you're saying a little more detail. This is something that we did last year, so it's not new and it is related. But I wanted to acknowledge what, having as much information as possible as appropriate. I'm still okay with the motion.
Yeah. I mean, I'm okay with it, just simply nothing's changed. I think we're just, you know, reaffirming, you know, our municipality's commitment to include everybody and reflect that during gay Pride Month. So we, any further discussion, anything else? Okay, no, but thanks, I think that's a good point. Okay, we have a motion, a second, roll call, please.
Trustee Lankin.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Lantier.
No.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
I'm sorry, did you vote no?
I said no.
Oh, okay, got it.
Okay. So next up, Martin Luther King Day Statement. June 1st, yeah.
Do we still have all the articles?
The banner should be.
We have it, we're good. We'll, we'll connect offline. Okay. Okay, next up, the, yeah, Dan, this was your agenda item.
Actually, I thought it was from a discussion with you about sort of re-signing our commitment to that Martin Luther King Day Statement, even though that's come and gone. Do you remember this conversation?
Oh!
I think that's why it was on there.
Oh, right.
Yeah, was to talk about re-signing it as a current board.
It was up there.
It was written, and I'm really glad to see that turned right side up. Somebody had turned that upside down on purpose, which I think is pretty horrible. And so it's signed by prior boards. It, I think the idea was to perhaps re-sign it as a current board, as a living thing. So we don't have to do that right now, but that's the idea. And so I think we could.
We talked about this.
I think we could circulate it, and if people have edits, we could field them and go from there.
Add and discuss the next agenda.
Yeah, let's just carry that forward, then we'll put it right on the next agenda and we'll circulate it and all that.
Thank you for thinking that way ahead, too. Often we think.
Right.
That month, okay, yeah, so.
Okay, okay.
Oh, no, we missed it this year.
No, we missed it this year.
Yeah, so you're thinking way ahead.
Yeah, way ahead for the next year. Yeah, we already missed.
You're way upfront on it now. Yes, okay.
I have a few comments from the public.
Okay.
And I have to go back, because we did have a comment to the Trustee Keating's statement, so I'm going to go back to that one.
Okay.
Trustee Keating's proposal is, Earth Pierce. Trustee Keating's proposal is unnecessary and complicates an already complex process, which is standard for projects across the country, such as, which would have had an enormous impact on any community. Any overriding question then is what specifically is wrong with the current process? Which boards is or not following the established process? The details behind the proposed committee should be presented to all the village residents in compliance with transparency standards in order for the residents to be in position to make an educated opinion regarding the proposal.
Okay, so to answer that, in no way did I imply or state that any of the boards are not following instructions. I don't know where Mr. Pierce got that. I disagree with his statement. I don't know what else to say.
Okay, you know, he has a right to.
Sure, thanks for your opinion, Art.
Okay, next up, that, that's it?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
The other person was.
Okay, thanks so much then. Okay, so next up, we're going to have, what was item number two? It was the zoning violation or the complaint regarding 65 State Street? And Steve, did you want to speak to that?
We received an official written complaint about a possible business being run on 65 State Street. It's been a concern. I have heard from several other neighbors besides the official complaint in regards to activities, and I will investigate and come up with a finding and present it to the board.
Okay, so complaint received, next steps is you investigate and you'll follow up with us.
Is something supposed to be this weekend? Does anybody remember the date of that? It's this weekend?
Yeah, the Bay Harbor Yard City event is this weekend, which has been occupied by the board already, so that will continue to happen, and then we need to look at what's going on there in the Bay Harbor Yard or code.
Okay, is your intent to, to try and see if there are any improvements that can be made this year, or is your intent to do it for, for both?
For future. And we have two activities on the, on the property.
Okay, one of the, one of the items in the complaint had to do with the signs that said where to park. Like that, that seems to be the kind of thing that maybe we could adjust this year.
I already asked her not, not to place a sign, because I said you don't have the authority to direct people to park anybody on the facility.
Okay. Yeah, I believe he's had conversations, yeah.
Okay. So, so in your opinion, there's nothing that we could adjust now to make it a better solution for the neighbors?
Nothing right at the moment.
Okay.
It's, it's a very interesting situation, you know, I, I tried very carefully.
What about the, there was, there was one particularly gratuitous, people were going to the bathroom on the property, is that the kind of thing that you can look at before it happens? Because that I'd like to see.
If it's not existing, it's hard to look at, but I, I have, people will be looking.
Yeah, I, yes, I, I know Jeff, you wanted.
Appreciate it, thanks, Steve.
One sec, Jeff, did you?
Yeah, I can just be clear, the board only approved the non-municipal use permit, and just, and that was totally a scavenger hunt around our streets and villages. They didn't do any approvals for anything on site.
Nothing.
So I think Steve is, so there's really two pieces to this. The non-municipal use permit for Saturday, which is for the use of the streets and sidewalks, and now we got this complaint that there's a business going on, which I think Steve is going to investigate.
Okay.
So those are two pieces.
Thanks for the clarification, I think that. Marty, did you have a question?
I have a question.
Your, okay, just I saw that you had a question.
I do.
Yes, well, I have a question.
And that is, can you tell me the difference between investigating that piece of property as a business as opposed to one on Jackson Park that's being rented as business? Can you tell me why you would investigate that when, when residents express concern and rightly, correctly look into it, and again, residents express concern about another piece of property, but you did not respond to any of them about it?
Yes, I am investigating. We've been through this over and over, and it is not technically a business in that property. I will continue to look at the code, as confirmed with the attorney of the village. He comes to the same conclusion in regards to our code. Code is very clear in regards to running an in-home occupation. 65 State Street, if that's an in-home occupation, has to be run by a person living at the facility. 5 Jackson Park is not a business. They are renting, we have no code to define the duration of a rental. Until there's a code that defines how long you can rent your property, I would have to treat everybody who rents a property in this village exactly the same, because they are doing it for profit. So technically, Mike Newcomb, how many houses have you on the rent?
Yeah, but they're all long-term.
Doesn't, there is no.
Did you respond to the residents regarding?
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to bring this back and call a point of order, because I think this is not an agenda item, and maybe we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting, you know?
Well, I.
Because my understanding is Steve made the determination and forwarded it to you, and, and if you choose to appeal, if your neighbors choose to appeal it.
I made a determination, and you were right to challenge that.
Yeah, I mean, certainly you could.
I have one question.
Sure.
And that is, did you respond to the residents who expressed a concern?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I responded to, Frank, Mrs. Lewis, or responded to email, and I've responded to your emails.
Not to me, I'm saying the residents who contacted you.
There's only one resident that received an email or a text, who that was.
And they were phone calls? And you responded to them?
Every person I talked to, I've responded.
Okay, I think it's been asked and answered, but, you know, if you, if you want to put it on the agenda, we can certainly do that. Because if you have concerns, you know, I understand.
Steve had mentioned bringing it up under member items, which I didn't.
Okay.
Given that we were talking about a similar situation, which I, from my perspective.
Okay.
Was a similar situation, in that determines, depends on your definition of a business. And so to me, that they were the same.
Okay.
It's a business being run for profit, and I wanted it considered as that. And your, the, whatever the residents do, now that you've made your official determination, and they know of the official determination, what happens from there then is.
Right, okay, okay. Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I just had a question about this, too. Is, is it a common practice when there is investigation of a possible zoning violation, to have the address of the owner listed as a main agenda item along with zoning violation slash complaint?
If you're asking me, I don't know any practice one way or the other.
No, it wasn't directed to you in particular, I, I just, that did jump out to me on this particular agenda. I think that, from, from what I understand that you explained, and that does make sense to me, it sounds like you're investigating whether they may be in violation of the zoning code. And that's perfectly fine, I guess, just as a, you know, as a property owner myself in the village, I probably would not appreciate being listed as a main agenda item on the board as a zoning violation slash complaint.
So the Waddams House, 19 North Main Street, we shouldn't have put that address on either.
I, I think that's a little bit different, because that's institutional. And on that item, I would actually also appreciate not having the, the Waddams name, because they're not the current owners, and I think it would be more appropriate to say that's the fire district building.
I think it's known from, as an historic thing, you know, it's a historic reference to the house.
True.
You know, because we have many houses named after people who used to live there. I mean, that's just an aspect of.
On the agenda item, I, I guess I'm just making my request, that if there is not, not an in fact zoning violation, that there's a complete determination for it. I think usually this is buried under the building inspector's agenda item, and I think that, to me, that would be preferable, just so it doesn't seem that we're calling something out.
All right, I understand.
Okay, all right, thanks, thanks, thanks for bringing that up.
We'll point out, just to understand what Steve's saying, but he didn't ask for it to be on the agenda. I just wanted to make clear, I was requested to put it on the agenda. So that's going to be an internal board decision, that you all need to agree on, because if I'm requested, when I, I don't want someone to say, don't they didn't put something out?
Right, okay.
Okay. Just want to point that out.
Let's work that out, and that's a good point, okay.
We do have comments.
Okay, yeah, but Marty, you had your hand up.
Marty Martina, 3rd Logan Street. During this conversation, it's been referred to as a business, so I'm just curious, is, what defines a business in, is this a business that is a profit motivated business, or is it a hobby? And that's a question that suddenly needs to be addressed.
Mayor?
Yes, Jeff?
I think that's what Steve's going to determine, is investigation. That's the purpose of the investigation.
Yeah.
Is it recognized as a for-profit business in the building right now?
I have no idea. Steve's going to, I assume Steve, that'll be a part of Steve's.
That'll be part of it.
Steve's investigation and the board.
Yeah, and I think that's a question that's part of the investigation. I think you're asking the right question, one, you know, one of several. Yes, Dorothea?
Okay, Earth Pierce, what are the specific complaints about 65 State Street? Frog House is not a business, but rather a nonprofit, correct? Then what then is the difference between an Airbnb and a hotel or motel, and Frog House is an organization by definition versus business? No.
Okay, thanks, Art. I think, you know, I think we just discussed, had that discussion, so any, any others? Oh, okay, all right, okay, thank you, all right. Any other comments? We're good, okay. Next.
I have a, I have a hand raise.
It was so close.
Very, very close. Okay, Ms. Foster would like to speak.
Ms. Foster should be able to speak. Hi, my name is Margot, or Dr. Fass, as you say, C-Fit, but please not miss, hasn't been that way for 56 years. So, I'm honored, I really loved the last meeting when Mayor Plummer said we're, we're all on the same page, and I loved it when Steve Love said that we, he always makes an effort to, to help people who are in code violation, and I was very appreciative of the opportunity to talk with him today, to understand. I appreciate Justin's comment about calling someone out on the agenda, because it would seem to me that if there's a code violation, someone would notify the, the so-called perpetrators or criminals, or whatever we're called, of, of this before it goes on the agenda, or at least notify us that there is a code violation. Anyway, the crux of the matter seems to be whether Frog House, which is a 501(c)(3) organization that is with a, with a message, with a mission of advocacy, collaboration, and education, which is hardly profitable, I mean, I've poured thousands of dollars into trying to serve the town with a unique business, I'm saying business, but a unique experience or. Organization. Or adventure that will be, be nice and good for families of all ages, and as Amy Velester once said, I'm the only organization in town which actually has volunteers and to, to do things for kids and their parents. Now, also, a woman came up and said the other day when she saw my little frogs, Bonnie and Clyde, she said, this is a place of hope. People are always coming by and saying, you let people up on your property? Yes, this is our property, I own it with, with Lindsay, and, and we just love people. We would, we hope all of you will come to our special event on June 26th, when, for a VIP get-together with Andy Smith of Stantech Engineering. I have said to Mayor Plummer since the very beginning, I'm at her service, I'm at the service of the village board. I want to help, I want win-win-win-win solutions. Dan is well aware that I am, I am, I really appreciate it, his nice non-violent statement at the beginning, and, and his, his efforts to bring people together, I think that's fantastic. So, the crux of the matter is, is Frog House a business or not? As I told Steve, I'm, I made $2 this past weekend, I made $1 the weekend before, and I made $38 the weekend before. And the cost of running a Frog House just to have someone there for, for four hours is $100. So it's hardly a profitable business. What I would like to say is that Steve was concerned about a store, both Lindsay and I, and Lindsay runs my social media, looked for on Frog House Facebook page, we couldn't find it. Now Steve got some screenshots, and then later when I went in, I, I, he said that they were gone. So, and he said he couldn't find them again. But in any case, we don't sell stuff from the store, even on the website, because.
Doctor Foss, we allow three minutes, if you could maybe just wrap it up and.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the time.
Well, thank you, too. Thank you so much.
Yep, I love you guys.
Thanks, thank you. Okay, yes, Steve?
This was, I met, and Margot came in today, a matter of, and we had a good discussion, explained some things, and, and offered to meet with her, go to the site and, and look over it and, and go through it, and try and figure out a solution.
That's okay, our goal is to work with everybody and get a good solution. So thank you, thanks to everybody, yes.
Just, just to clarify, in case anyone is, is thinking that this is something in front of the board, really this is just informational, this is a, a summary update of Steve's work and his inspection, he's an independent building inspector, and based on his determination that it may be something that comes back to the board, or, or something that goes to the applicant, but this is not a matter in front of the village board right now. I, I think that maybe clarifying the agenda item and saying this is a building inspector report in the future, and putting this underneath it might help to clarify any confusion.
You didn't have a report tonight.
Yep.
And you didn't have a report tonight.
And it's not a building inspector role, it's a code enforcement.
Code enforcement, yeah.
But, yeah, and I agree with that, Justin, and there is impact to the neighbors, and that's the immediate concern. I'm not as concerned about is, what's a business, is it a business, that kind of thing, as I am parking and waste and.
Quality of life.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Next item up, the, the Waddams House, 19 North Main Street, that was, you wanted it on the agenda?
I actually don't recall adding it to the agenda.
I believe it was.
Or was it, did you put the Waddams House on?
I, what I did was I forwarded a letter that was received by Lisa Coe. Sent by Lisa Coe and sent to the entire board. And with her request that she be placed, that it be placed on the agenda. And so I believe that's how it came to be on the agenda.
Okay, so, yeah, everybody's had a chance to review the material. And I believe also included is a letter from, yeah, Paul Schenkel, of course. Who is one of the commissioners of the Pittsford Fire District. Just to clarify, the, the fire department doesn't own the house that's actually next door to Villatall, the Fire District does. And if you have been able to just take a look at the letter, typically if there's concerns about any code violations or any issues with properties, Steve, in his capacity, would reach out to the owner and try to get sort of a plan together and see if we can move things forward and have a positive outcome. And reading this letter, I see that they're really trying to come up with a game plan, move things forward, and the house is secured. So, I guess really, at this point, you know, this is normally what we would do. You know, we would get the game plan together with the resident or, in this instance, the Fire District. And they said that they will keep us posted in terms of what, what their disposition of the property is or whether they're going to keep it. So, I guess at this point, I know this has been of great concern. But we are in an active dialogue with, with the Fire District. So, I think what I would like to do is I would like to ask each board member, poll the board, to find out what each board member thinks perhaps, you know, is this the right approach? Should we do something different than, you know, having the dialogue and moving it forward as, as has been expressed in the letter to us from the Fire District? So, I'm going to start with you, Justin, and we'll, we'll go right down through the board so we can hear everybody's opinion about what to do.
Thank you. Well, one, one thing that I learned from the packet in, I guess, follow-up information that came from Lisa Coe's letter, Lisa Coe being the chair of the Historic Preservation Board, was a letter from Paul Schenkel, which I had previously not seen. And that was dated April 5th. And so I, I wanted to clarify first, when, when was this email received? And why, why was it not sent to the board before it was included in this packet? I think that would be helpful.
It was sent to the board when we all received it, I thought.
The first time I saw it was in this packet, I don't know if anybody else saw it.
Listen, I thought it was supposed to be forwarded to everybody. And then that was, that was an oversight.
Okay, thank you for clearing.
That was, yeah.
So, I was actually quite surprised, it was, it was an interesting letter and a helpful one. Part of what was interesting to me, and I obviously haven't been a part of all these conversations, but at the end of the letter, he said that the, the Fire District would possibly entertain selling the, subdividing the property and selling the front of it, the, the house, to the village for a dollar. So, my thought on that was, well, I think I can find a dollar somewhere. You know, and in fact, before I.
Take a cast like that in the room.
Yeah, and, and before I joined the board, I had spoken with the Fire District, the commissioners, and, you know, I, I had asked, well, you know, what if the, the plan's been for this property? And, and to be honest, I was a little bit frustrated that it's been, it's a prominent house and it's been forwarded up for quite a while. And I said, well, you know, I know you're using the, the carriage house in, in the back of the property for the Fire District. Why not subdivide it and sell the front so that somebody can productively use the house? And it seems like that's something they're willing to entertain. So, to be perfectly clear, my, my goal would be that if, if we bought it for a dollar, you know, did a, a quick claim or whatever it is to, to get a title, I would want to see it back on the tax rolls and give it to a private owner. Is, is that what they're discussing, is that something that the Fire District would entertain?
Yeah, I mean, I think the letter expresses that, I mean, I think that they're, they're really looking at, you know, all the options at this point. And they're our first responders, you know, so we rely on them. And I can't imagine, you know, geez, I'm sorry, I didn't make it to the 911 call, we were restoring a house. You know, they have different priorities about how they would use their funds, whether they would use it on this house or use it maybe for more training or more equipment. So, I think they're really just trying to come up with the best possible solution. Yeah, no, I think, I think this is a good way to go, you know, potentially. I also had a conversation with Jeff Pollak, because he's on the board of the Landmark Society. And he put me in touch with the director, who came out and just took a look at the house from the outside. And he said that the house is actually pretty well intact, but just to do the exterior of the house, and that would be putting back the windows with, you know, putting back, all, the windows, when they were taken out for asbestos removal and abatement, I guess fell apart. So, they would have to be replicated. So, he counted up all the windows, took a look at the property, and he felt that just to do the exterior of the property was about $170,000. So, the Landmark Society also, depending on how this would work, if we wanted to get it back on the tax rolls, the Landmark Society potentially could front the money, help with the restoration of the exterior, and then sell it. So, whoever bought it, you know, they just want to get their money back. So, if they spent $170,000, they put it on the market for that, they get the money back, then whoever takes it over does the interior. So, I mean, there's a number of options, and I know, I think they have also spoken with the Fire Department about it. So, I mean, I think at least we're, we're moving a logjam, maybe, you know? Any other thoughts before we go to the next, okay, Dan, but what are your thoughts?
Yeah, obviously, sit down and talk and listen and, and that all sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
You know, the, the town is also, one other idea is that the town's court in a strip mall down here is less than desirable. Maybe that's an option.
You know, we, we, they already explored it, it's, the building is just not suitable, you know, it's not large enough, you know, because we, I agree. Because I know they're looking, I think, for another, another option there. I'm just going to finish polling the members of the board and then we'll send the questions, yes?
I, in Mr. Schenkel's email, or his letter, he explained that we're doing a master plan with Stantec right now and asks us to wait for the outcome of that. So, I, I'm inclined to wait for the outcome of that and then move forward. It sounds like there's dialogue, there's a conversation, they're, they're looking at it, I feel like it is making headway. And I, I watched the HPP meeting, the end of the HPP meeting from the other day. And it sounds like Lisa Coe was hoping to just get some information, hopefully this, this will help with, with that.
Yeah, she, she had received that letter last night, yeah, so she, she had, had the information certainly. Just to, just to clarify what Stantec is, Stantec is a company that has been retained by the Fire District. And they are doing literally a top-to-bottom evaluation of the house structurally and looking at the integrity. So, just, just to clarify that, any other?
Nope.
Okay, Lily, what, what are your thoughts on this as we go forward?
Yes, I think several things, number one is that auction sounds attractive. I would be very interested to first view the findings of fact regarding subdivision and creating a substandard lot. And because it would just be the house and the carriage house would be separate. So, you know, I'm sure the carriage house would have enough land that goes with the Fire Department, but the property in the front would then be a substandard lot. So, I'm sure we can find findings of fact that would be able to differentiate this situation from others in the village so that any home that has a carriage house on the property then isn't looking to subdivide and, and create separate lots with other houses on them. So, the precedent would be, would be an issue. And I would, I would appreciate more information from the Landmark Society. And, and once we get, I'm sure there'd be a very complicated contract involved regarding ownership and what happened to the house and the zoning also, that would be critical. I think residential is always welcome, and one would hope that it would be that, that, but we have a mixed-use area here. And so it's open to a lot of possibilities. So, it sounds like a, a very interesting option to, to look into, yes?
Yeah, okay, all right, so I think, you know, we're all, if I'm, if I'm hearing the board, it's okay, they're chugging along here, they're, they're trying to get some more information and they'll, they'll, they'll get it back with you and with us and see how we're going to, going to proceed. That's where it's at, yes.
Can you differentiate?
Name please and address.
Marty Martino, 3rd Logist, you, you distinctively said that it's owned by the Fire District. Can you differentiate the impact and what it means that it's not owned by the Fire Department, but that it's owned by the District?
Well, the, the Fire Department is within the Fire District, and so they are their own entity, they're, they have their own tax base, you know, we pay our taxes.
So, you can't say that the District is owned by Menden and the others, it's not just an entity of this.
There's, yeah, there's two Fire District Commissioners, yeah.
So, it's owned by the Fire.
Yeah, 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 I know, this can be a little confusing, yeah. Okay, were there any questions online at all about this item?
Just tapped in, I was going to sneak out, okay. All right, our peers trust that all would agree that the house would go for hundreds of thousands of dollars based on current sales of properties in the village and more than the cost of any reservi-.
Renovation.
You know what you meant.
That was on here, sensitive offers would come in base on ASIS listings, suggest the board seek an appraisal to keep help in making a decision as to whether or not to buy for an hour.
Okay, thanks, Art, all right. Okay, next up, the Nice Dot Contractor, Cold Spring Construction Company. Zach, is this a, sort of an update for us here?
Well, so, last meeting, I had you guys a email explaining what the contract was and some examples of how the contract worked. And this is to kind of keep the project moving as they progress through the village and any issues that would come up. And so I was trying to project scope that is, you can see what's determined. But it fell onto the village's responsibility for repairs rather than seeking a contractor to do the repairs, allowing Cold Springs to make the repairs on the fly.
So, yeah, just so everybody understands, you know, there's all this work being done in our village. I feel like Nice Dot moved in and they're forwarding their mail here, but it's great, we're getting an RGE, that's true. And I think Greenlight too, Frontier meeting, you know, I mean, a lot of things, well, Frontier's no more, but, but anyway, so there's a lot going on. And so, because we're an old village with old infrastructure, when they start a major project, they may hit something that they didn't know was there because not everything is mapped out, if I'm correct, Zach, in our village. So, rather than stop, stop the presses, stop everything, they make the determination to just go ahead and fix it so they can continue on with the project. So, it's kind of to everybody's advantage, but there may be some additional costs that, that are incurred. But it's just part of, part of getting this work done because we're going to have some really major improvements at the end of all this. Yes, Jeff?
It's our responsibility because we all know where the stuff is.
That's right, we didn't.
If we knew where it was and they hit it, it would be their responsibility.
Then it's on them, yeah, yeah, that's true, because as I said, there's no mapping in some of these areas, so we, we just, good luck, right?
It's very treasure.
Yeah, very treasure, very something, okay. So, any other?
No, I just wanted to make sure everybody's on board with it.
Yeah.
To allow them to go ahead and start.
We have to get it done, we have to get the work done, we have to make those improvements. So, I think at the end of the day, it's all good stuff, okay.
I didn't see anything we needed, we needed to sign.
No, it's just, update, okay. Okay, so we're just nodding in agreement that we want to get the work done.
I'm not exactly.
Yeah, we already decided that the last week.
We did, I think you just.
You did?
Yeah, I think.
No, I, I think.
Not the actual cost, but the intent.
The intent.
To get, let them fix things as they came to process, and we were okay with that. But it seems to me that we might need to approve.
Do we need an emotion?
A motion for the additional cost because it'll impact our budget.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Maybe we should, oh, if we need to, if we need to amend if they hit, hit something.
I think we have to agree that we are going to pay the costs of what it does.
Whatever.
Whatever it cost, the expense of whatever it costs to fix lines that are unmarked.
I think we did that last time though.
I don't remember.
Yeah, how do we check?
Feel like it was left, oh, because people wanted more time to look at it.
Okay.
I said on the table, just.
Do we need an action?
Yeah, I think, I think, I didn't think so at first, but now that we talk about it, I think we are talking about using village funds.
Yeah, I thought we already decided that, but maybe not, maybe we just talked.
There's no harm in doing it again.
Yeah, okay, fair enough.
Yeah, it's sort of a belt and suspenders thing.
So, as these come up, are you going to bring us, I mean, there are going to be more of these.
Yes.
Yes, as things.
We've already agreed, we went, well.
I think this is a blanket.
Right.
When they do this project.
Right.
If they hit unmarked village stuff, and that, that added expense will be the expense of the village.
Right.
Yep.
You can't undo what they fixed, or, I mean, they already did it.
So, rather than, I mean, you'll be updated on what's going on if they do run into something that is village-owned and unmarked. Let them know what's going on with it, and this is just allow them to do the repair.
Let me understand, let me understand this more. So, when do we, when are they billed for this, how does it get paid?
So, my understanding is they would keep it going throughout the project.
They'd keep a running tally.
A running tally, yeah. So, I guess we also have to get insurance, certain, because from them because they would be doing work on behalf of the village.
We should have them already, they're working on our writing, they're working on our write-away.
They should have me approved.
They're all working on our write-away.
What?
That being the subcontractor for Nice Dot.
Where does our write-away intersect with the state write-away, are they in it?
Outside of the state properties.
Right, thank you, but I think that they've got to use it for their equipment.
Yeah, no, you've got to have it.
So, we've got to have it, no matter what?
I don't think. You can reach out to them, ask them for all the issues, the structures.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
They are storing equipment on our DPW grounds as well.
Yep. So, I think there should be a general approval of this concept, but when the money comes in, I think you're going to have to approve it then.
Okay, yeah.
I'll find out if it's going to be like a monthly.
Please do.
Or at the end of the project, if they would give us, you know, a credit for.
It would hurt to go a motion, say that, that we understand that it's going to be a village responsibility for any added expense resulting from them having to repair unmarked and unsurveyed equipment or.
Facilities?
Utilities.
Utilities.
Utilities. Utilities.
Okay. What you said. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call, we got through that one.
Just do like it.
Hold on, did Steve have his hands up?
Yeah, because if it's, if they don't realize what they're getting into, you know, it's just allowing them to make those repairs as they go.
And excuse me, was Kendra, I'm sorry, just before.
Kendra, this is 21 Rand, is there a cap? How much you could have to pay if they accidentally hit something, but we just don't know what we're getting into, right? We're the ones that are on the look for it, so what if we don't have the money for it, like, what is our backup?
Yeah, what if it's a ding?
Yeah.
Because I get that it's our responsibility, but just like a homeowner, if I pull out a wall and there's a problem that I have to press pause on it, it sounds like there's not even a pause button here, they're just going to keep running on our tab.
I mean, right, I'm, yeah, I'm looking at, you know, the samples of what, the kind of work that they're doing and it's sort of, you know, a $300 repair, $100, I'm looking, you know, just as they go along, like if they ding something. I don't know, it's like, oh my gosh, they took out an entire water main, you know.
For example, how this first came up was when your.
Good question though, thank you.
The crosswalk on the gas.
Yeah.
They hit a buried conduit, this electricity for this light that lights the side.
Okay.
And so they damaged it, so now they have to repair it. Because we don't have mapping of those utilities underground. It's, it falls back on our responsibility for making repairs because.
And how much is that?
Yeah, in giving a bill, so actually.
Let's find out.
I'm sorry, the way that that worked out is they were able to kind of cheat it. Kind of a makeshift repair on it, and it was not quite deep enough where it should have been per DOT standards. But the engineer allowed it to, to stay where it was, so they just kind of bandied it and buried it.
And this goes back to why we're, we're putting together an entire village-wide infrastructure database. Because we don't know where everything is, and we also don't always know who owns what. So, it's, it's really the first time ever, you know, that anything's being done like this, but I think this is why we need this, you know, to get that mapping done, to, to know what's underneath our streets.
There was another incident on the corner of Lincoln where they dug into, it looked like a junction box. And they first saw it as ours, but it turns out it was RGE's.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, unknown RGE utility that is still alive.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, welcome to an historic village with historic infrastructure.
Is all this work being done at the state contributor rates?
Uh, I would assume.
All right, so it would be good to know, at what point would they come to you first to ask? I mean, just the blanket is a little concerning and maybe most of it is nickel and what we consider.
Yeah, I was looking towards saying, oh, okay.
And we'd have to repair it anyway, but if it's like something huge and it's going to be a big cost, it would be good for us to know.
And also, if they've, if they've already hit things, we need to know about that. We, you know, like, we need to know about that, I want, I'd like to have like, I know, and hang on, hang on, in terms of what the cost is going to be too, you know, like, like, like right now, I don't, I don't, I don't want to get a big bill at the end.
The superintendent did say something along the lines of 20% above the cost of the trees.
Okay.
So, it's.
Okay.
It all depends on what happens, so. I mean, if they're digging in the ground, they hit a live wire that completely fries, you know, their excavator. It could be anything.
This just gets better.
Without burial, I can't say for sure.
What's our alternative, Zach?
Yeah.
We solve progress for them and we bring, go through the process of clearing our own contractor.
Well, that, but that's not really a solution because we're going to keep hitting our stuff.
That's always a process. So we could try to get a utility locator contractor in and get ahead of them of Cold Springs as they're working through this project.
And then that would help us with mapping. And we could put it in the database.
But it's also not that easy.
I know, I know, we've had, I know.
Because especially with buried electrical lines.
Yeah.
You're tying into a live electrical line and then using something like a metal detector to locate the same level ground, marking the other ground and then move through with GPS everything. Then putting it into a map that's going to be, so it's, it's not always.
Yeah.
And it'll stall the rest of the thing.
And it'll stall everything. And either way, it's going to have to be fixed, is what I'm hearing. Yes, over.
I have a question. We do have comments room, but it's, yes and no is the latest.
Okay.
Can we put an amount on an instance that would, to come back to the board?
Like, not above a certain amount? Can we, can we do that? I don't know.
We can do it, you don't know the number, it's a fact.
So, you know, if they hit something that's going to be over $1,000, then maybe it gets brought to a board before they move forward. I mean, we're comfortable.
It still stalls the pressure.
How are you going to have a, how are you going to have a meeting?
No, we can have emergency.
Yeah, we do emergency something.
Emergency meeting for that.
Yeah.
Can we do something along the lines of the procurement policy where anything over $1,000 or $5,000 that.
Two, it's two.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just using a figure, but maybe there'd be more comfort for the board in that instance.
Excuse me, was it Kendra, you had your hand up?
Sorry, I was going to say there'd be more comfort for residents in that instance. We do have a policy where it has to approve a certain level of expenditure. And I feel like this is why, because we can get it over our head and it makes them be more careful. And we've all worked with contractors before and having it, they don't want to stall their project anymore than we do.
They're trying to get out of here and test this once.
Yeah, they're airdropped into here, yeah. Well, then maybe we should dovetail it with our procurement policy that is already in place up to 2,000. You know, I think it kind of.
I mean, most of it looks like it's been way under that.
I know, I mean, that's why, I was sort of looking at that and thinking, oh, you know.
Aren't these just examples?
So is there examples?
Yeah. No, I know, I know, but they were just giving us ideas.
It's hard to determine specifics really.
So why don't, and you're in touch, you're in touch with the.
So we have to make that under $2,000 call on the procurement policy.
Zach, can I have the same level of.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, then I think the motion should be, probably the motion should be passed respectfully.
So we had a motion and a second.
Yeah.
So we, you know, we did have our discussion, so we also, the discussion has brought forth it, why, why wouldn't we just take, use our procurement policy that already exists? And I'll get with you offline, I want to, I want to meet with him too and we can talk, talk about this so they understand.
We don't need the motion anymore.
Right.
On the floor, then we'd have to vote no in order for it to go.
Yeah, okay. Oh, yeah, yes.
We're still discussing this motion, yes. Is there a time limit? In other words, I understand about the procurement of this $2,000 ceiling, in what time period? So could it be like 2,000, 2,000, 2,000, all within a six-month period? So that's really. I think you'd be talking per instance of damage.
Yes, that's.
Incident.
So it's, yeah.
It could add.
Zach could keep it in mind. Obviously, if they, five days in a row, they hit 2,000 every day, I mean, yes, then I think we need to have a major discussion.
Yeah.
What I could ask him to do is just, you know, I need, once the bill reaches to, say, $1,000, that.
Yes, we'll have that conversation with him, I want to, I want to have that meeting, yeah.
I mean, they don't, they, they don't want to hit trouble either. So we're acting like they're looking, like, they're going to need to stall to fix it, even if they're doing it themselves. So their incentive is to get this project finished because they're the subcontractor for, for Nice Dot. So they don't want to hit our things either. It's not like they're looking for trouble.
Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call?
We don't need it, so.
Just to clarify, the most expedient and responsible thing we're discussing right now is not adopting this motion.
Right.
And going with the procurement policy, as well as I know.
Thank you.
No, no, right.
Oh, boy.
Oh, boy. All right, Trustee Keating.
No.
Trustee Stetson.
No.
Trustee Lathier.
No.
Mayor Plummer?
No.
Motion does not pass.
Okay. And we have a procurement policy. Okay, well.
That we don't need to vote on.
That we don't need to vote on, we have it, okay.
They're, they're going to be in touch with you, most of them, so they're going to call you when the stuff goes out.
Yeah, I'll reach out to them tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll coordinate.
I know where the board is at.
Okay. Thanks. Yeah, yeah, I think that's, that's all good. Okay, next up. Oh, I'm sorry.
I still have public comment.
Comment, sorry.
Come in. Okay, so up here, able to provide a target date for the old utility poles to be removed, which were replaced during Greenlight's new utility pole installations. Also, able to provide a rough schedule for New York State D O T roadway milling and paving on State Street and Main Streets. Does not the village have an engineering firm overseeing any improvements required of the village? Is it Stan Techs? In any regard of additional work costs should first be submitted by the contractor to the village's engineer and the village staff and board for review and sign off. This is a standard industry practice.
The milling on State Street, we don't, we don't have any additional information when they're starting on that, do we?
Once they get to that point of the project.
Yeah.
It's after the North Main Street.
Yeah, yeah.
The concrete work done, all pedestrian improvements done, so then you come through another road and create.
As soon as we know something, we'll pass it along.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you in contact with the engineer in charge of the project or?
Which, me?
Yeah.
No, is I supposed to be?
I don't know, I thought you were.
Of the North Main Street bridge? No, you guys invite me to the meetings, I'm not in charge. I wish I was.
No, yeah, usually when they get closer to when they're going to do it, then we find out all the information and the dates and, you know, so that we don't necessarily get a lot of lead time. You know, with the exception of the bridge, because that's just such a huge project.
Right.
The meeting that we'll have with the projects that we're cutting.
Let's try to nail that down.
We can see if we can get the engineer in charge of the project.
Yeah, let's do that. Okay, yes.
One more quick one from up here.
Okay.
So just calling New York State D O T E I C, I had a call with them today and he has some information.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's great. All right, any other?
No, we can move on.
Okay, thank you very much. Oh, Steve, yes, sorry.
I don't have anything else on the agenda, you might move on.
We're going to need you on the code discussion, which is, which is.
It's coming right up.
You should be able to get that done before 8:30.
I know, there's chocolate chip cookies in your future. I know this, it's going to be baking cookies.
I'm going to wait early in the morning.
Me too, I'm not far behind.
Okay, so, and actually, the next two items are kind of a little bit wrapped, wrapped with each other. Firearms code and Dan, you had asked us to.
Yeah, so there is, the last time that the village of Pittsburgh updated its firearms code, it was established in 1989. And it was last updated in 2010 to include hunting and outlawing the use of foothold traps. There is some, some very good code from Brighton that has some things that we don't. And among them are, and so the macro ask is for us to explore it. Nothing's going to be voted on tonight, nothing, nothing could be voted on tonight, it's changes to code. But the, the assignment is to probably look at this draft code and see whether it might make sense for us and to discuss it as a board at a later time in a public manner. Some of the things that are in their code that is not in our code, and theirs was updated as recently as 2019. And I did distribute it, it's, it's only a page and a half long, it's not terribly long. Some of the things that I liked in it were, it said, you know, you can't discharge a firearm within the limits of our jurisdiction unless it's in self-defense, really common sense stuff. Say again?
We don't have this, I'd like to discuss that one.
Okay. We were not, I think, I didn't think we were allowed to discharge firearms in the village of Pittsburgh.
We are, but Dan's suggesting that.
That you can in self-defense.
In self-defense, that makes sense. The other, the other thing that I liked was they specifically mentioned bows, like, which, you know, is not a gun. So that they make distinctions on that. The other thing that they do very well is, and this was one of the recent things, mandatory storage of firearms, and we can explore that. The other thing that I liked in theirs was reporting of stolen, lost, or missing firearms. If, if you lose one or it gets stolen, you're asked to call the police and report it. There are exceptions in theirs and then there's penalties, and there are penalties in ours as well. So it's not very much, but there are some more well-regulated, to quote the Second Amendment, ideas that I think are worth exploring. So what I would like to do is start with Jeff looking at the draft of the Brighton code and see how, see whether there are any things that would work or wouldn't work and we, then we start discussing.
So I have looked at it. I think it's all a matter of choice for this board. I think there's anything in there that strikes me as illegal. We're not really controlling firearms, which we do, but controlling use and.
Storage.
Storage.
Yeah, I mean, the village has absolutely no jurisdiction over any gun ownership at all. Am I correct? That's, that's the state. So, and, and again, I think the two items kind of go together, the code update item underneath. I, I really think that it would be in everybody's best interest that we really schedule a separate special meeting or workshop to really, you know, we're tweaking some of our codes with updates, we're taking, maybe revisiting this code because, you know, the code hasn't been revised in a while.
I'm not sure we're done with the firearms.
No, I understand, but I'm just saying, I just am throwing that out that, you know, I think that we would have better use of time just consolidating this in a special meeting where we can really drill down.
Agreed on, agreed on the code. So we're, are there any, I don't know whether you guys have time, this came in yesterday, so I respect that it came in at the 11th hour. I don't know whether you've had time to review it, whether you have any initial thoughts, whether there's further you want to go with it.
Yes, Justin.
Just one initial thought, a couple of initial thoughts based on, on looking at this preliminarily. It seems to me that the two of the areas that you mentioned, Trustee Keating, the, the storage of firearms and the also reporting missing firearms. It looks like Brighton adopted the, the storage component before New York State updated their storage component of their, of the New York State laws. And so I would like to review that and, and see what we're trying to accomplish that's different in the state legislation. And just wanted to bring that up so we can enter the discussion with that. Likewise with the, I, I looked up the New York State laws around reporting of missing firearms, and it's actually much more specific and extensive than Brighton's.
Great.
And so, you know, my, my preference would be that we don't have overlapping legislation in, in the village with what the state has. My, and finally, my personal thought is that, you know, while we are a dense, densely populated village, I don't necessarily have a, a problem if someone has a safe backstop to use a longbow for archery practice. And so I'm not sure if I want to enter it yet, so.
Well, that's what it says. That says i- if you're X number of feet from a building and it's target practice, it's fine.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and to your point, yeah, if New York State law covers it, I still want to, in our code, specifically refer to New York State law so that it is explicit and clear to our residents. So we can explore that. So I'm pretty much done with this, does anybody else have anything they wanted to say?
No, I think we can, you know, explore it and, and hopefully have a workshop.
Agreed.
Yeah, so.
So do we want to get that workshop scheduled?
We do.
Okay. And Steve, you've got a preliminary list, right?
You have a list in front of you.
Everybody's got a list.
Yeah. Yep. And I just think, you know, in terms of just, you know, the agenda tonight, just to wrap it into that workshop, I think makes, is probably far more practical. So we can really kind of.
Five-minute discussion.
Yeah.
No, no, I agree, totally agree.
Yeah, so can we come up some dates maybe?
Sure.
Can't afford to mistake on one of that bits.
Oh, you did, well, see, there you go.
I don't have my pen in front of me to know what I'm doing, so.
Do it by email? We'll circulate it by email.
Would you see, may I do?
Can we hand over, thank you.
Thank you. Always good when someone knows what I'm doing. Okay. How soon are we looking to do this?
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is this separate from the code update discussion that I'm anticipating we will be having?
It's, it's all wrapped in, so the, the, reviewing the firearms code.
Yes.
Will be wrapped into the workshop that we're doing with the code update because it's part of our code.
Great, I'd like to add one also then, please. We have on file from the town of Victor, short-term rental Airbnb. It should be in the file somewhere because I brought it to the board probably two years ago when we were doing potential code updates. I'd like to resurrect that, have Jackson again look at it and have that also part of this workshop.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you can add it in, okay, thanks.
Can I?
I, I think we can all just send Steve other, other additions, I've got a few as well.
Yeah, just email me, I'll take from Victor or whatever and I'll add it into the list.
Yeah, yeah, everybody, anybody, anybody wants to add something in, because this will be addressed in the workshop, so you can just reach out to Steve. Yeah, that would be good, yeah. Justin?
I, I was going to mention actually a code deletion really briefly. I, I don't know if anybody wants to take a look at this between now and the workshop. We have a section of code which I've been referring to as the, the winter wet blanket legislation. And it prohibits snowball throwing and. Sidewalks.
I think I violated that code.
I think I did too, walking a bunch of kids to school over the winter. So I thought that if we start on this now, maybe we can actually get that code deleted before next winter. And so if anybody wants to take a look at that, it's Article 9, games and streets, and it prohibits them and trends to jail time.
That's really.
Jail time, wow. They go to the courthouse, right? Sheesh.
I stand for the coast.
Someone is having a bad day then. Wow. Okay.
Grumpy trustees in those days.
Yeah, grumpy trustees.
Okay, going back to when would the board like, how soon would you like to get this scheduled?
June.
Yeah, I was thinking, we don't, we're, we only have one meeting a month, so we could use the other. Wait, let's see, what is our meeting?
That would be June 23rd.
That is the day before Sutherland graduation.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah.
It could be a little bit before that, might be easier.
What else looks good? Before that, yeah.
June 16th?
June 16th?
Yeah.
That's strong contender.
And what day is that?
Thursday.
It's a Thursday.
Oh, it's a Thursday. Oh, it's a Thursday.
Can we tentatively agree on that and give that to the board tomorrow?
That work for you?
Yeah, I will.
June 16th and Thursday.
What time?
Renee can't do it.
But if I can, I can get my stuff to him if that's the only date that works.
And this is not the only one of these we're going to have.
That's fine.
June 16th, Jeff, you had, you said.
Did you want to have this meeting?
At the June 16th?
Probably.
Probably.
Okay.
What time did the board be shooting for?
No.
Could you do five?
Yeah, five, maybe. Does that work for folks? Five o'clock. Billy, would that work for you? Okay.
Okay, I will get back to the board tomorrow. Tentatively, we're good for that. I just want to verify a couple of calendars. Can you catch that?
Can you sum your list? Yeah.
Thanks.
Workshops.
Yeah.
June 16th, 5:00.
5:00.
Okay, thank you. Can I propose that we take a 10-minute recess? We're coming up on the two-hour mark.
Okay.
Five-minute recess.
I'll entertain a motion to recess for 10 minutes. Second, okay, roll call.
Trustee Lickett.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee LaFier.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, next up, municipal property security policy.
Sure, that was my agenda item. Really, my focus here is on making sure that we're all on the same page about how smoothly installed security cameras are being used. At the last meeting, we discussed turning off audio recording. I think that makes sense with the policy. Trustee Stetser has also reached out to the police captain, and he's gotten some useful information. So just before this meeting, I circulated to the board a set of ideas about different policy points, basically based on our discussions and based on some of that input. So I don't think that this is anything that we have to adopt tonight, and potentially we could just circulate a draft and make some changes and put it on the agenda the next meeting. The board is amenable to that, but really just to get it rolling and make sure that we're all on the same page about how we're using security cameras.
Yeah, I didn't really get a chance to take a look at stuff. It was a little hectic today. And then I also have been polling the village mayors in the county. You know, what do they do? What are their policies? Spoke with Bill Smith. You know, they all have cameras, but a lot of villages have cameras everywhere. And it pretty, some of it, actually, there's a few more details that you, I think, I put in. I did a quick cursory look, but I didn't really drill down on it. But they all have cameras, they all, pretty much, it's pretty straightforward. I asked Bill Smith, the town has cameras, and he said they really haven't even, don't even have specifically an adopted policy. It's just, you know, they know it's there for the security of the building and.
Do they have the, do you know if they have the sound on or off at the town? Do we know yet?
Yeah, I think he's, you know, I think it's, you know, I don't know if he answered that. I had asked him, but we were all conversing in, you know, in the leadership meeting. I can follow up on that. I will.
Curious.
Yeah. Well, we have a sound off now. We have a sound off. Yeah. Okay, so why don't we, you know, let's all take a look and circulate some ideas, and we can bring that back. Thank you. Okay, next up, duties and priorities of the clerk treasurer. I thought, you know, this would be sort of, just to kind of give everybody on the same page here, because there's been obviously a lot going on, you know? And we were talking about, you know, the transition really that we're going through, and it kind of was, I mean, we joke in the office that it was the perfect storm for the transition because it came right when it was the budget, right when it was taxes, you know, hiring new people, you know? It was just a lot. So you've all had a chance, I think, to take a look at the sheet of what those duties and responsibilities are. There are, the way the office runs in Dorothy, I'm sure you can speak to it as well, there's always consistently another deadline every single week. It's always deadlines just to keep the basic business of the village going and running village hall. So I guess I'm sort of just, you know, asking the board, like, you know, what are these priorities? You know, when you look at these responsibilities, I know there's sometimes a lot of emails and phone calls and questions and follow-ups in addition to what these duties and responsibilities are. And I guess I'm, I'm just asking all of us maybe to be sensitive that maybe things can't be turned around as quickly with information. We can't always follow up as quickly because there's just the ongoing daily responsibilities or duties that are there, so.
And I would just think, and I'm not complaining about the duties. And my concern is I want, when I say something, you say I can't get to it immediately, or I'm going to have to push you off till next week. It's because I'm trying to prioritize getting the village's taxes out, payroll. If I don't get payroll done, I'll have a mob scene, I can tell you that. There are certain things that have popped up that I just want to get done, and the big push which the board should understand, well, have hope agree, is me getting these financials done. So that has been something I've been trying to really get done. So I can't automatically jump, you know, there's certain things I have to jump for, foils, the phone, a few of those other things. So if I push you off, it's nothing personal, it's not that I don't like the duty or the question or whatever, if I'm saying I'm going to need a few days, it's really, I need a few days. And even with new staff, because they are so new, I can't immediately say, Christine, can you go, she doesn't have enough time in to understand even how to take that process. So we're working on it, everybody's coming up to speed, and, you know, over the next couple of months, things will smooth out because we go into our, I don't want to say slow season, but it's.
It's a little quieter. It's a little quieter, maybe.
And I don't see you guys as much in the summer. Nothing personal, I kind of like it. So I get.
That's kind of a personal.
I know, no, I mean it in the best way, gives me a chance in the office to catch up, and I'm trying to get a packet together, you know, because the packets, our packets have been huge. And, you know, I'm not even saying PZBA and all them, they've been having a lot of meetings too. So, but just an understanding that I'm not really trying to push you off, but I'm pushing off because there's other things I feel that have to be done right then and there. That makes sense.
And then also, too, I think, you know, you're working your way through the financials, and then, as the board knows, you'll be going in then to transitioning into, you know, automating some things.
Yes.
Capturing data more efficiently, things like that, so.
The transition, as we get through and more things are happening, you know, we're adding check scanners in the office for when we get payments, so that process will speed up deposits. There's all kinds of things that are going in place, you know, with payroll, everything. So things will, the duties will shift, things will calm down, we'll get more speed, and obviously with the transition, I'm gaining more knowledge and getting things in quicker and understanding the software much better than I had when I started back looking at it beginning of March. So.
Yeah.
It's all coming together. I'm just asking for locations, and if I push you off, it's nothing personal.
And your best friend is Williamson Law.
Oh, Ted and I are buddies.
Well, they've been, they've been really supportive and really.
I have to say, Williamson Law book has been fabulous.
Yeah.
He's made himself more than available for training and getting me up to speed, and he's like, okay, let's go to March. So he's spending the time, and they usually give me an hour at a time, and that's time they're not charging us for, so it's really appreciated.
Oh, it's been very helpful, yeah. So, you know, we just wanted to kind of let everybody know where it was at, you know, because it's a small staff, you know, there's just a lot of moving parts, and in addition to all of this, you know, it's serving our residents and making sure we're prompt, proper this morning.
Absolutely. The residents come first when they come through the door. That has always been my policy. You know, we can't put them off. We have to try to solve this, you can't for them before they walk out.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, so thanks for all you and the staff are doing. Everybody's great. Okay, next item up, we have our organizational meeting here.
Hello.
Oh, right.
I threw one of these on my life.
I know.
Prefer not to start.
I thought you wanted to stay for the whole thing.
No.
No.
We have choreographed steps and everything.
You don't want to wash them.
Yeah, he can wash the tape, yeah. Well, thanks so much, Jeff, really.
Good one.
Thank you. Thanks for all your help. Okay. We're ready to go here now. My first appointment is I am appointing Trustee Stetser as deputy mayor for the 2022-2023 fiscal year. And I make a motion to appoint Brooklyn Thomas as deputy treasurer for one year with his term ending in 2023. Do I have a second?
Roll call. Trustee LaFier.
Aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Lickett.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passed.
There's a lot of these. Do we have to do it as a roll call, or could we all just go? Or no?
Have we done it that way? I know, we just do all?
It's been done.
Do you want to do it that way?
I'm going to read it to the board. We've been doing roll calls consistently. I mean, I can speed, try to speed through whatever the board wants.
Roll call. You want roll call? Roll call? You're saying that? Okay. I guess we're doing roll call. All right. I will entertain, excuse me, a motion to appoint Mengele Mesker-Barn Company CPA/PC for a one-year term ending in 2023.
Second.
Roll call.
Aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Motion passed.
Aye.
Aye. We're all saying, you can all just do a group.
We still roll call.
You know, I know, we sort of did, yeah.
It's a little.
It's really long. Yep. Okay. I will entertain a motion to appoint Scott Harder as village engineer for a one-year term ending in 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 I will entertain a motion to appoint Stephen Robson, excuse me, as village assessor for a one-year term ending in 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, aye, aye. Okay. I will entertain a motion to appoint Gary Wilkins as village insurance agent for a one-year term ending 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, aye, aye. Okay. I will entertain a motion to appoint Gary Wilkins as village insurance agent for a one-year term ending 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye. I will entertain a motion to appoint Bernard P. Donigan, Inc. as the financial advisors for a one-year term ending 2023.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye. I will entertain a motion to appoint Maria Murillo as the historic preservation consultant for a one-year term ending 2023 for non-75 Monroe Avenue matters. Is there a second?
Second.
Or is there move, move in a second, sorry?
So moved.
You moved.
Second.
Okay.
Aye.
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 Okay. Legal representation. I will entertain a motion to appoint Jeffrey Turner as the village board attorney at a rate set per the retainer agreement for a one-year term ending 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Aye.
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 Okay. I will entertain a motion to appoint, to appoint as planning board and zoning board of appeals, attorney Mindy Zoglin Esquire of the Zoglin Group, PLLC, at a rate set per retainer agreement for a one-year term ending in 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 Mayor, I'm sorry, you need to go back.
Now, we can go back to Jeff as historic preservation board attorney.
Oh, I missed him. I skipped right over. I just saw his name again, okay. I make a motion to appoint Jeffrey Turner as the historic preservation board attorney at a rate set per retainer agreement for a one-year term ending 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. I make a motion, I will entertain a motion to appoint Timothy McGill as municipal bond attorney for a one-year term ending 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay.
Aye.
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 Did you say one? Okay. Aye. I make a motion to appoint Hodgson-Russ as special counsel for 75 Monroe Avenue at a rate set per retainer agreement for a one-year term ending 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 I will entertain a motion to appoint Christian Cassini as the village labor attorney at a rate of $165 per hour for a one-year term ending 2023.
So moved. Second.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, ethics board. I will entertain a motion to appoint Richard Palumbo as a member of the ethics board.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Discussion on that, please, for Jeff.
Okay.
I knew in the code that there are supposed to be three members on the ethics board, and I did not recall seeing any alternates. So my question was, has a member, right now we've got three members listed on the website, somebody resigned?
Yes. Yeah, we have, Jeffrey Hansen resigned because he's been, he knows he had so much traveling coming up, and he felt he couldn't continue the commitment, yeah.
When did he resign?
He resigned, I think, a few months ago, but the board hadn't been meeting, so we needed to find a replacement.
They had tried to meet, and they've been having some conflicts, so I need to correct the website.
When would that generally come to our board? I mean, I'm kind of surprised that I had not heard that we didn't have a functioning ethics board.
Well, the board hadn't been meeting. They hadn't met for quite a while, so I said, you know, we'll fill the position, so now we have a position filled. They hadn't been meeting. There was no meeting.[1470.37] There was no meeting.
No.
Yeah. Well, I think there's maybe one left, I think.
There's one left, okay.
So.
Okay, so I guess.
I think one of them worked, I don't remember. I think it might have been Larry Hickey was traveling or couldn't be making meetings for a while.
Could the board be forwarded a copy of the resignation letter, so that we're all on the same page about.
Yeah, it's in the file.
Records.
Sure.
Okay. And going forward, I would really, you know, if one of our boards stops functioning because they don't have a quorum, I would really appreciate hearing about it. This one took me by surprise a little bit. How many matters are there?
But I just want to jump in for a minute there. Regardless, the board wasn't able to meet anyway, even if there had been a quorum, because the other members had conflicts with their schedules. So regardless of that.
I did another question on that. How many pending matters are there in front of the ethics board at the moment?
I think there's one.
There's one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then, I had another question about the letter from Mr. Palumbo, which is very well-written, and he seems to be extremely qualified. I was just curious, that his letter starts out by saying, "Thank you for your invitation to sit," and stressed the mayor, "thank you for your invitation to sit in the Village of Pittsburgh's Ethics Committee for the purpose of reviewing a pending matter before the village." So I was wondering how, without being on the ethics board, and with only one matter in front of the ethics board, is he being recruited, is he being solicited to join the ethics board to represent?
No, he's joining the board. I just said, because he said, "Is there a lot of business before the board?" I said, "I think there's maybe one or two matters." That's all I said. I don't think he's just.
He hasn't seen anything without.
Yeah, he hasn't seen anything. There's nothing, he would know nothing more than that. He just said, you know, he was asking, "How regularly do you meet?" And I said, "I don't know. We just meet when there's matters before them." And he said, "Do they have a lot of matters?" And I said, "We had discussed it before that."
See.
I said, "I think there's maybe one matter, maybe two." So I think he's just referring, nothing more than that.
The only person that hands over, shows matters to anybody is me.
Yeah.
And I can tell you, no one's seen any of the matters Mr. Palumbo has not.
He doesn't know.
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just saw the, you know, "For the purpose of reviewing a pending matter before the village," just struck me as a little bit concerning, that there's only one matter.
I don't think it was any other intention, other than he just was referring back to a conversation where he's, you know, he said, "Is there a lot of work? What's the schedule?" I said, "I don't know how much work there will be, but I think there's only one matter right now." So I think it's nothing more than that. I wouldn't read anything more into that. Okay, so we have a motion and a second for a call.
Aye.
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 No.
Aye. Okay, next up, historic preservation board. I will entertain a motion to appoint Jeff Pollak as chairman of the historic preservation board for a one-year term ending in 2023. Anybody?
I'll make a motion, so we can discuss.
Okay. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
So my only concern was if the members whose terms had ended were notified, that's all.
Oh, yes, yeah, I spoke with every single person, absolutely. Yep. And I'm also getting your question.
It's the same thing I usually ask if the board members who are ending their terms were notified that their terms had ended, and.
They had personal phone calls from the mayor, and they also were getting follow-up thank you letters for their service, really, on behalf of our village, which I guess has never been done. I mean, I think that's a nice thing to do.
Well, interestingly, that's.
You know.
I received an email, I don't know about anyone else, but maybe because as liaison I received an email, and it was indicated that the chairperson was not notified ahead of the change. And I would also say, I understand totally the, it is the purview and the right of the mayor to appoint the chairperson. I totally agree with that. I also agree with the concept of changing out chairpeople over a period of time, but with the understanding that maybe they remain on the board to take advantage of their expertise in the learning curve, which is substantial. And they remain on the board, but they just do a shift. In this case, this chairperson was removed totally, even after, I think, years of dedicated service to the village, without explanation of why. And then, and I'm going to slip into the next appointment here, so forgive me, instead of having her remain on the board as an experienced individual, replaced with an individual who has very little experience with the village, excuse me, no one has not lived here very long, and has absolutely nothing in their resume that points to any expertise, and that learning curve, again, is so sharp, that I would have assumed that if the people have remained on the board, that these two potential appointees could be placed as alternates, and then they would be in position to watch and learn and attend conferences and be brought up to speed, and then perhaps in the next round, then become fully appointed board members. But to replace two board members with expertise with two new people, it seems counterproductive to what the village is trying to accomplish in a way of historic preservation. The other part to that is that, I'll lose my chain of plot, is that for purposes of 75 Monroe, that would make that board, leave that board in such a very weakened, vulnerable position in the terms of expertise, because you only have one person on that board with more than a year and a half of experience or even history and background of what has occurred. And that person would be, I'm trying to think, who's the one person that's left on it? Bill McBride. Bill McBride would be the only person. Jeff Pollak has only been on for a few months for 75 Monroe.
Christina Lanahan's also an alternate.
He is.
Christina Lanahan.
Right, yeah, I understand that she has. So those two, she's an alternate, but if you have people who do not have conflicts, it would be these two new people, you would have a board, you would need the alternate. And those three people, I have to include Jeff, who, you know, is an expert in his field, he has not had the experience with 75 Monroe, because they only started re-meeting with that board, I think, in September. So he doesn't have the background experience. You have two new, that leaves two people on the board with any sort of history and institutional knowledge regarding 75 Monroe. So those are my concerns.
No, I thank you for that.
And I wanted to express those, and I thank you for your time.
No, I thank you for that.
Okay. Do you want to move vote?
Well, I'd like to say something, because everybody starts from somewhere on boards. This is the first municipality that I've ever really worked with, that people stay on boards for really extended periods of time. Most municipalities rotate their people on their boards, you know, actually, the terms are shorter every couple of years. And I think that, we have 1,300 residents, we have so many people that are interested in the village, who love the village, who wanted to step up and learn. I can tell you, with the next candidate, and actually, the next two, they've joined the Landmark Society, they're already interested in things, they're taking training. I know, and maybe, you know, Susan, I'm just thinking of you, because the planning and zoning board started from scratch, when you all were brand-new on the board, when the prior board resigned. And you've got the training and the expertise, and you're an excellent board. And I think everybody is capable of transacting business on behalf of our village, if they love our village, they have the abiding interest in learning and moving forward, and transacting business where you are there to look at the application, apply the criteria in front of you, and move the business of the village forward. And I appreciate your comments, I really do. I think, though, this is really an opportunity also to engage people in our village that are a younger demographic, they're residents that are stakeholders too, they want to raise their families here, just as you raised yours, and you're all raising yours, and they're in it for the long term, they're excited about this, they want to do this, and they reached out to me. So I appreciate your comments, I do.
And I think your service of alternatives would fulfill what you just described.
I understand what you're saying, but I also think, we have strong alternates. Bill McBride has seen this from the very beginning, for example, with 75 Monroe. I also think fresh sets of eyes, too, that come in and see a project that has been going on for 12 years, that might make a difference, that they're simply looking at the facts and they don't carry any baggage, and they're new people with a fresh set of eyes. So we have a motion and we have a second.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yes, Renee, sure, of course.
These are at the mayor's discretion, so even if we were to, like, I guess I don't understand, particularly for the boards, during the organizational meeting is the only time, really, you don't need our approval to make these.
In this case, you do.
In this case, yeah.
Just another time.
We vote on.
It's with them replacing somebody who leaves early, that one doesn't need it.
Yeah, like, they don't finish a term for whatever reason, you know, for example. Yeah.
So I would have liked to see, since we're finishing this discussion, that Lisa stayed on here even as an alternate or something, but I don't know if we can move that around, because that would mess up everything here, so, I mean, I.
To be clear, Lisa can't rule on 75 Monroe.
Yeah, she recused.
Oh, yeah, okay. She recused. So really, how many of those people?
And Ken Warhol, whose term ended, he had recused as well, in other words.
So the continuity for 75 Monroe is really not.
Was not.
Not an issue.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So. Any other, did you have?
No, I would have liked to see her stay as an alternate, but I don't.
Well, the phone call that I made, I said, you know, "There's plenty of opportunities, you know, to work with our village, and we so, you know, appreciated her service as the chair and all that." So, and I said that to people I spoke with, you know, to everyone, yeah.
But she wasn't given the opportunity to remain on the board. That opportunity was not offered.
Yeah, it's at the discretion of the mayor, as you know.
Okay, so I was wanting to be clear.
Yes, yeah, and I'm clear on that as well. Thank you.
So the motion has been made.
There's a second.
To appoint Jeff Pollak, and there was a second.
Yes, that's what I just said. Yeah.
Okay, so roll call, please. Lilly, trustee Mathieu.
No.
Trustee Stetser. Hi. Trustee Key.
Hi.
Trustee Lightkit.
No.
Motion passes.
What about me?
Oh, no, hold on. I'm so sorry.
No, that's all right. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to appoint Dan Olson as a historic preservation board member for a three-year term, ending in 2025.
So moved.
I'll second. I just wanted to note that I believe his last name is spelled incorrectly. It should be O L S O N.
Oh. Thanks for the catch.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Dan Olson?
Dan.
Dan Olson.
Dan Olson, yeah.
Okay, trustee.
Yeah.
Roll call. Trustee Lightkit.
Aye.
Trustee Key.
Aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee Mathieu.
No.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to appoint Christopher Dubrowski as historic preservation board member for a three-year term, ending in 2025.
So moved.
Second.
I'll second.
I just wanted to ask on this one, there is a cover letter, and there doesn't appear to be a resume.
It should have been in there.
Oh, he slipped one in.
No, he did slip one in. I swear, I slipped it in.
I may have missed something, I just wanted to.
It was all of them in finance.
Ah, thank you.
Yep, it was all of them right at the end.
Oh, maybe you.
We picked it, it was in there way too many times.
It was a little nuts, I know. I know.
Ready for a roll call?
No. Did you, okay. So we have a motion and a second, okay.
Trustee Lightkit.
No.
Trustee Stetser.
Hi.
Trustee Key.
Aye.
Trustee Lightkit.
No.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next up, planning board and zoning board of appeals. I will entertain a motion to appoint Justin Bleedstras, chairman of the planning board and zoning board of appeals, for a one-year term, ending in 2023.
So moved.
Stirring up? Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Trustee Mathieu.
Aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee Key.
Aye.
Trustee Lightkit.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I will entertain a motion to appoint Kathleen Hoffin as planning and board and zoning board of appeals member for a five-year term, ending in 2027. Is there a second?
Second. May I just ask a question on this one? Is Ms. Hoffin a member of, is she a resident in the village?
She lived in the village for years, she just moved outside the village. And I know Stacy also, she's an alternate, Stacy Fried, who lives outside the village. So we have two alternates, so, you know, obviously Stacy couldn't sit on the board, you know, to fill in with Kathleen. But Stacy also may not remain as alternate. I mean, I know she's had some work commitments that have been, just wasn't able to reach her before the meeting.
I know it doesn't really matter, but it's literally right over the line, she lives on Sunset.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I guess, as far as the.
We have two alternates, the other one does live in the village, who could sit.
Right, and our code talks about the, there only being one member who is not a resident in the village.
Right, and I spoke with our attorney, I wish Jeff were here, because he said, as long as they don't sit at the same time. For example, just so we're clear, on the H P B, Bill McBride no longer lives in the village, Jeff Pollak does not live in the village, Ginny Searle does not live in the village. So it is the same situation, you just never have three people, you know, the additional person sit on the board. So Christina Lanahan would always sit. You know, that's not an unusual circumstance, because they're alternates.
Yes, I definitely, I spoke to Jeff on this as well. He says, "As long as we don't have any more than two at any given time, we're not breaking the code."
Yeah.
Who's leading the board, the P C B A?
John Kettura.
Of the board.
Yeah. So we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please. Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye. Okay. Now, next up, wage compensation for 2022, 2023. I will entertain a motion to accept wage compensation for the board of trustees, planning board and zoning board of appeals, historic preservation board, clerk's office, highway department, let me get everybody in, highway department, as presented to the board.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. Aye.
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 Did you say that? Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, right. Okay, lead all positions for 2022, 2023. I will entertain a motion to approve the positions as presented.
So moved.
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Oh, aye, yeah.
Do you need a minute?
Yeah, no, you know what? The chamber isn't on here, is it?
This is on there. It's on the economic.
Did I miss it?
Yeah.
Oh, I missed it, okay, I just ran past it. Okay.
So it's my turn?
Yep.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Oh, this is another, okay. I will entertain a motion to accept the tax rate and sewer rent, tax rate sewer rents for 2022, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the official meetings as presented to the board for 2022, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye, sorry. I will entertain a motion for the hiring process and employee training for 2022, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the official newspaper and bank for 2022, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the bond and check signatures for 2022, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the hours of operation and floating holiday for 2022, 2023.
Remind me, is Juneteenth on there?
No.
No.
Or demand a, well, we recognize it, but it's an unofficial employee holiday.
I thought it was, I thought we closed the office on that one.
No, we recognize the holiday, but we have to have another action to.
Right, that's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there was concerns on, was it going to be a paid holiday? There was other factors involved in the union as well, because it needs to be a part of the union agreement.
So we can bring it back to do that.
Can we bring it up at the next trustees meeting, which is tonight?
Sure, let's put it on the agenda, then.
With, there's the.
July 5th. July 5th.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Aye.
I'm, I'm sorry, from a motion. Did we motion?
Yeah, I thought we did.
All, all motions.
Okay, okay, there we go. We'll just do it again.
Thank you. Sorry.
The hour's late. Okay, so we have, aye from Lilly.
Aye.
Oh, aye.
Aye. Okay. It gets better. Okay. I will entertain a motion as presented for the 2022, 2023 fee schedule.
So moved.
Second. Aye.
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 Aye. Next up, I will entertain a motion to approve the following 2022, 2023 resolutions as presented to the board.
So moved.
I think you have to say what they are mileage attendance.
We can just, it's just you're approving. Yeah.
Then aye.
Are you a second? Who, who seconded?
Dan seconded.
Oh, okay, sorry. Okay. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Before you go on, the, the previous motion where we did the schedule.
Yeah, it used to be Thursday.
Oh, you thought another one turned it.
Also, there's a blank where it's an escrow for application review. Is that intentional?
That's intentional.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we need to amend that one because of the date, the correction, I mean.
Or the day.
Thursday?
Yeah.
Yeah. It is amended.
Yeah, it's amended. Okay, so.
So the fee schedule, I make a motion to adopt the fee schedule as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Lilly? Second?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. We're back. All right. Okay. Next up, I will make a motion, or I will, I will entertain a motion to approve as presented the adoption of the procurement and building use policy for 2022, 2023.
So move.
Second.
Aye.
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 That's your last one.
Ta-da. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Okay. So where are we here? That's for member writers. Member items. Okay. Anybody have a member item?
Yes, I just wanted to float an idea really quickly. It's something that was mentioned to me at NICOM. And it seems like during, during this meeting, we had a couple of agenda items and we couldn't remember who added them. And I was just, that, that seems like, you know, not, not really an ideal situation. So the suggestion from someone that I, that I recently met was that you would just have people's names tagged with the agenda items. Nothing we have to decide right now, but I just wondered if that would help out.
Or, or the clerk could keep the record. Actually, you could just keep a record just to remind people.
Sure.
You know. Yeah.
Either way, I just.
Yeah, I know, because there's so much going on and I go, "Did I do that? Did I say that?" I know. Thank you. Thanks for that suggestion. Anything, any other member item from you? Okay. Lilly, a member item?
I had mine earlier.
Okay, thank you so much. Renee, member item? You're good?
I just have the standard one that I'm in favor of direct negotiation on 75 Monroe in an attempt to hopefully solve it.
Okay, thank you. And, and Dorothea?
I have a member item.
She has a member item.
I have a member item and I have it for Zach. We, he, we would like to do a special meeting on Tuesday.
Yeah.
For the purpose of possibly hiring an employee.
Yeah, the seasonal, it's the seasonal point.
Special meeting and.
Tuesday's tough.
Okay.
They'll give me the time and we'll try to make it happen. Tuesday or Wednesday, whatever works.
Tuesday or Wednesday?
Sure.
Would that be okay, Tuesday or Wednesday? I mean, you know, just if we have conflicts, that's all.
What time are we trying to do it?
Whenever. We can do it.
What'd you say?
10:00 AM.
10:00 AM, let me see.
I can't do 10.
I'm 30.
10:05.
I can do 11 if it's short.
On Tuesday?
Yeah.
It'll be, it'll be pretty quick.
It can be, you know, and it can be whatever.
It could be any, you know.
Whatever works for.
And then I could do somewhere between 3:00 and 4:30.
On Tuesday?
On Tuesday.
So we're looking at, that would be Tuesday, May 31st.
About 3:30?
Say again?
About 3:30?
Does 3:30 work for everybody?
Yep, and I can do 11 too, as Dana mentioned.
Okay.
Yeah, or 11. I could do 11.
I can't do 11.
Oh, you can't do, well, let's do 3:30. That's good for everybody.
3:30? Okay.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, no, that's good. We'll get that taken care of.
Want to shoot over a resume if you got one?
Yeah, just pulling it together. Yeah. Okay, we're good. We're good on member items, everybody. Is there any public comment this evening? Yes?
Martin on 30 Logan Street would like to have everyone on the board recognize that trustee Keating was given full attitude to filibuster for 10 minutes at the beginning of this meeting. It was not on the agenda and he was not interrupted. There was no discussion about the time involved for him to filibuster. And that we've all sat here through meetings when other people have brought up conflicts, when they have been rudely interrupted and told that these, the timeframe of this meeting and the course of the direction of where this conversation is going is inappropriate. This wasn't on agenda. It was a personal filibuster that was irrelevant to anything that had anything to do with tonight's meeting. And that trustee Keating does this every single night. He did it five minutes ago and it's a filibuster. So either everyone has loved filibuster or no one's loved filibuster. It needs to be recognized. I'd also like to point out that at 7:30, Dan Keating, the village trustee, a videotape of what Dan transcribed tonight was posted at 7:30 and then like an explanation of how that was posted during the last meeting.
Okay, one, I take offense at the word filibuster. I read a statement.
That was a filibuster.
Hang on, excuse me.
I'm talking.
You've spoken. Thank you very much. We have, we have the trustee responding. Thank you.
Secondly, my posts were timed to release after I knew it would be done. So the video posted at 6:40 and email went out at 7, as did the Facebook post.
And, and, and I'd just like to, just in, in terms of general like administrative terms, on the board has adopted a policy where, you know, when people get up to speak on an item, it's, it's three minutes as part of the policy. Trustees have every right to opine and, and give a statement and trustees at various points have done so. And I gave a statement as well in the beginning of the meeting, you know, because we're elected officials and we have our opinions and we're allowed to opine. So, but thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
At the same time, too.
Excuse me one second. Excuse me one second. You, you have spoken and given your comment and I appreciate that. I do. And I think the board has heard, has heard your thoughts. Thank you.
Your authority towards Keating was extraordinary. It needs to be extended to all trustees.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Any other business for the board? I make a motion. Will you adjourn?